Ms. Grover.
Here.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Razak. Ms. Demming.
Present.
We have a quorum. Mr. Razak, the president is absent, so pursuant to policy that gives me the responsibilities as acting president today. Mr. Rising, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for a treasurer's bond modification, which needs to start precisely at 7:05. So we can either sit in awkward silence, or Mrs. Peel can read a board salute.
Yes, I can. The board salutes Niqua Valley's yearbook staff and sponsor for winning a first-place award in two categories from the American Scholastic Press Association. The 2020 book received a first-place award for the overall 2020 book and a second award for outstanding senior section. Congratulations to all involved.
And we have another board salute from Mrs. Grover.
The board salutes Niqua Valley High School's robotics team 2360A on winning the Community Award Online Challenge sponsored by Google. The team was challenged with the question, "How are you connecting as a team to make a difference in your community when in-person connections are limited?" Team 23680A's winning entry was a virtual workshop for elementary students in grade three through five, in which each team member rotates among Zoom breakout rooms to present an aspect of STEAM, featuring a hands-on activity for elementary school students. Congratulations to all those involved in this wonderful opportunity.
And now we will sit in awkward silence until 7:05. It is now 7:05. We're going to open the public hearing for a treasurer's bond modification. Floor is yours.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the public. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to obtain public feedback on the administration's recommendation to apply for a modification of the Illinois School Code regarding the requirement to obtain a treasurer's bond. Administration is recommending the district apply for a modification to reduce the penalty of the bond from 25% of all bonds, notes, mortgages, monies, and effects of which the treasurer has custody to 10%. A treasurer's bond is effectively an insurance policy for the district against the malfeasance or otherwise misappropriation of funds by the district's treasurer. Prior to fiscal year 2018, the Board of Education annually passed a resolution reducing the penalty of the treasurer's bond to that 10% number. This was consistent with the Board and our regional offices of education's interpretation of the statute at that time. In 2018, there was a change in ROE leadership, which requested the district obtain a 25% coverage amount. If approved by the Board of Education this evening, this modification will effectively bring the district back to our prior practice, again, that was in place for many years prior to 2018. Over the past several years to meet a 25% requirement, the district has paid over $70,000 annually to obtain a bond. The district has found many insurance carriers do not even offer coverage in the amount required, and the ones that do offer it at a very costly amount. A 10% coverage would still provide the district approximately $27 million in treasurer's bond coverage, and Indian Prairie estimates the annual cost of this coverage will save the district $50,000. This represents significant savings for the district while still providing a sufficient treasurer's bond amount. Administration has put in place several safeguards in addition to the treasurer's bond to ensure public funds are handled with the highest care. These internal controls and practices include annual external audits, appropriate segregation of duties within the business office, the use of independent and reputable investment advisors, and financial institutions. The district has a history of clean audits. We've obtained the Association of School Business Officials Certificate of Excellence Award 13 years in a row. We have a long history of obtaining the Illinois State Board of Education's recognition or review financial status. Because of all this, we do feel that a reduced treasurer's bond amount is appropriate. At this time, I am open to any questions from the board.
In layman's terms, essentially, this is a requirement that now the Regional Office of Education has that we maintain a certain level of insurance should we default on any bond payments, correct?
This is more related to cash or investments that are held and that are assets of the district.
Right.
As opposed to our outstanding debt obligations.
Okay.
But it would be an insurance policy against those funds being mishandled or misused by the district treasurer or other financial officials under the treasurer's watch.
So this is essentially appeal on our part to ridiculously cover 25% and instead cover a more realistic 10% when we've been justly responsible, you know, for many, many years.
That's correct, yes.
All right. And in addition, this is going to save us $50,000 as a district.
That's our, that's administration's estimate, correct?
Matt, are we, is the ROE, DuPage ROE, is that an anomaly in the state, or what's the, what's the usual requirement?
That's, that's a really good question. The, the issue is really that given the size of our district and the size of some of the other unit districts, the 25% amount just, just isn't feasible. So I'm not sure, to be honest, if, if this is an issue where many, that impacts a lot of the smaller districts throughout the state. I do know that there are other districts within DuPage that are pursuing a similar avenue, because they had historically, like us, obtained the 10% amount and have had trouble obtaining 25% over the past several years.
So where does this, essentially, where does this go from here, once we do this?
Again, if approved by the board this evening, this modification, we will file it with the state board. We hope to have a resolution to that pretty timely, either their, hopefully their approval. And then at that point, we would be able to obtain the reduced treasurer's bond amount as we look forward to fiscal year 2022. But it does, it, our passing it tonight doesn't guarantee that it will be approved by ISB. We have had discussions through our attorney with, with representatives of ISB, and we're confident that this is a good way forward and that they will approve it, but, but we're not 100% guaranteed of that.
Any other further questions? There is a line in the agenda for public comment on treasurer bond modification as presented, and we have no one signed up for, to comment about the treasurer's bond. So we'll be moving to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion?
I move that the treasurer's bond waiver be approved as presented.
Just to close the hearing, right?
Oh.
We're passing that later.
I'm sorry, to close the hearing. Sorry about that. I move that we close the hearing for treasurer's bond hearing.
Second.
Jeanne, can we have a roll call?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Carubus.
Yes. We've closed the hearing. Moving on to student representative report, Emily Shaw, please take the stand.
Throughout the month of February, our school counselors are actively meeting with each student to discuss course selection for next year. At these appointments, counselors help students pick the classes that will empower them to achieve their post-secondary goals. The senior class had 11 National Merit finalists out of 16,000 who are in contention for the National Merit scholarships, and had a record number of 279 senior students who are being recognized for a 3.6 or greater cumulative GPA during our IP Scholar Ceremony on March 16th at 7:00 p.m., which we have worked hard to set up as in-person. We are excited to jump into the next few months where we really celebrate our senior class of 2021. The past weekend, our Wobonzi Valley chess team had a program-high finish of sixth in state. The team collected in our Wobonzi Valley LMC to participate in the virtual state series and ended up having their best season to date. Model UN hosted their virtual event this past Saturday. Wobonzi Valley's Model UN conference is usually one of the best in-person conferences in the area, and with COVID pushing everything virtual, our team took on the challenge several months to host this event virtually. We're glad to say it was another success. Scholastic Bowl will host the regional tournament on March 8th to officially enter their postseason, where they enter as a top seed. We'll keep you updated on their progress. Most recently, our theater department is working hard to create a virtual experience for the spring musical. We look to include up to 40 students in this production that would be presented in early May. After a brief pause, the Illinois High School Association welcomed back winter athletics. The current athletic programs that are competing throughout the state includes badminton, boys' swimming, cheerleading, dance, girls' bowling, girls' gymnastics, boys' basketball, and girls' basketball. The majority of these sports will compete up until March 13th. Three sports that were postponed during this traditional fall season will begin their seasons in March. Boys' soccer begins on March 1, football on March 3, girls' volleyball on March 8, and boys' and girls' water polo will begin on March 15. We have enjoyed watching our Warrior athletes competing once again and look forward to watching them for the remainder of this school year. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
We're now going to move on to public comment for non-agenda items. We have one speaker signed up for that. You can approach the podium, Mrs. Menendez. I'm going to read the comments statement. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak on the agenda item, that comment will be taken prior to that agenda item. Yeah, 30 minutes is allowed. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Welcome.
Thank you. Christine Martin, Kim Hughes, Heather Summers, Monica Skeels, Elizabeth Mencilla, Cara Fahy, Amanda Barardi, Michael Siller, Natalie Volna, John Timmons, Steve Perlini, Dan Verden, Erica Pavlik, Eric Mendoza, Corey Sanders, Glenn Schneider. This is just a short list of educators at D204 who have made this year meaningful for my children as well as other parents in the community. In addition to these teachers, the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation, in partnership with Wells Fargo, has had a 33% increase in the number of nominations for our A-plus awards so far this year. For those of you who are not familiar, A-plus awards are presented to educators and staff who have been nominated by a parent or many times students for having gone above and beyond. IPF also acknowledged approximately 145 educators through our Gifts of Gratitude Program, which was launched this past winter. This is a program where parents make a donation to the foundation in honor of an educator. Some of the teachers received multiple acknowledgements from our community. Finally, I had the opportunity to sit in on the IPF Teacher Grant Program this year. I was in awe of the projects that our teachers proposed that will allow students to apply their learning to real-world events, which included PCR techniques to identify viruses for several of those grants. My husband and I moved here to this district 15 years ago after careful consideration of the educational opportunities that would be available to our children. We have not been disappointed. My occupation as an educational researcher allows me to visit districts across this country. Each time I come home from a site visit from one of these districts, my gratitude for our district is renewed. None of this has changed because of the pandemic. I would not want my children in any other school district. And I assure you, my house has been greatly impacted by this pandemic, and we've made sacrifices that are not unlike other families. Many thanks to the parents and the students who have taken the time to lift up our educators. Many thanks to our educators who are dedicated to their profession and continue to find creative solutions to teach during this pandemic. Thank you to our board and to our district. We are a community that is stronger when we are working together, showing kindness and compassion, and being a model of resilience to our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have eight speakers signed up for, to speak about agenda item. We're going to, they are all related to reopening the schools, and we'll have public comment right before that discussion. So we're going to move on to the consent agenda item and superintendent report. Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Mr. Carubus, members of the Board of Ed and Indian Prairie community. Last week, our governor provided his annual budget address. In that presentation, he shared some key picture items that will impact education next year. I just want to share some of that information in light of the fact that we shared our budget last meeting, and we'll continue to provide budget updates to you. 21% of the governor's budget is slated to go to pre-K to 12 services. Within the pre-K to 12 funding, evidence-based funding will be flat. Our chief schools business officer has planned for a flat EBF in creating the budget for next year. The but, the governor's budget does add some funds for the following: teacher mentoring, $6.5 million; social-emotional learning and trauma response, $6 million; and principal mentoring, $3 million. We are fortunate that funding from the state has not been reduced, but it is not fortunate that the funding remains flat for the second year. Finally, we do not know what will be the final budget that the state adopts. We also still are reliant upon the state sending us their funding in a timely manner. More information will come later, but I felt our community should have this information and an understanding of what the budget looks like as we go forward. I am pleased to say that our three high schools are, are moving forward with plans to have high school graduation at their schools this year. Planning for graduation is a long process, and our schools are moving forward with their planning. Due to limitations related to holding the event at NIU, we have decided to have the events at the high schools. Our ceremonies will look very different this year compared to prior years, but what is most important is that our seniors this year will have a ceremony while they will march in, have parents watching, and be able to throw their caps in the air. Once given the green light, our principals have already moved out on the process, and for that, I'm very happy with their creativity. Mr. Carubus, I will share more during our reopening presentation later, and so at this time, I'm going to return it back to you.
Okay, we're on to the consent agenda items. Can I have a motion on these items, please?
I move.
No, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve consent agenda items D through F as presented.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Ms. Peel.
Aye.
Ms. Grover. Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
And Mr. Carubus.
Yes, motion passes. Now we are on to the discussion of the COVID-19 update on reopening schools. We will have public comment on that. Our first public speaker is Dr. Emmons. I'm going to read the statements first. It is now time for public comment for agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior, which is now. 30 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Dr. Emmons, take the mic, please.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and board members. I am Dr. Beata Leszekiewicz Emmons, a mother to a senior and a freshman. I cannot believe that this board continues to allow our highly acclaimed academic district to be relegated to an online Zoom academy with a ridiculously little class time. At no point did we, as a community, relinquish the board's responsibility so that Dr. Tally and a few administrators would take control in the direction of our schools that would negatively impact our students. As a dentist of 30 years, working six inches away from patients' faces in this pandemic, I find it ridiculous that you insist on six feet when it has not been proven to be any more effective than three to four feet, let alone that it's just a recommendation, not a rule, not a law. PPEs, protocols, systems work. Teachers are getting vaccines. Students can be tested. If none of this was working, the entire health field would be the ones in the hospitals months ago, and it would have been game over for all of us. Stop the fear, follow the science. You're so concerned about liability, yet what about the liability of not providing proper education? IEPs, 504s, other support services, the damage emotionally, mentally, and socially to our students, not to mention the ridiculous stress and workload for those teachers trying to make a two-system work, yet they know they are failing. Equity will never be achieved in a hybrid system. It will just destroy our academics. There is a lack of transparency, a willingness to include the community and parents. You won't accept our help, our time, fundraising, any form of collaboration. You won't listen to our high school principals that know the students, the staff, and even the layout of our buildings, and use their help in order to put our kids back into the classroom. I guess it's easier just to do nothing. Instead, you listen to union bullies, politicians, government agencies that don't follow updated science and have their own agendas. There are plenty of examples of successful districts throughout the state and throughout the country. So stop trying to hide behind equity, metrics, and safety and make the difficult decision that needs to be made. Get these kids back in school where the majority need to be, deserve to be, before the damage to their education, emotional, mental, and social goes way beyond coming back from. Do not pass the buck by doing nothing because your seat is ending. Yes, you are volunteers, but you chose to be volunteers. Anyone can do a job. And it's, it's easy to do a job when it's not difficult. We keep hearing how hard everything is. What about us? What about the students? What about the teachers? What about us professionals? It's been very difficult for all of us, too. Dr. Tally consistently complaining how difficult, how hard it is. That doesn't inspire trust or confidence. What shows character, conviction, and leadership is how you proceed in an unprecedented time. That is what our kids have had to do. That's what we've all had to do. I leave you with the words from the athletic halls of Niqua, which I've passed many times. It's important you will find a way. If it's not, you'll find an excuse. Thank you.
Thank you. The next public speaker is Mr. Bergeron.
Good evening, Jim Bergeron, and I have a sophomore at Niqua right now. I want to start off on a positive note, because I'm not sure you're going to hear a lot of positive tonight. I, I do thank you all. I have been in similar situations and sat on public boards and in, and been on the receiving end of everything that you're getting. So I do appreciate your time and, and you volunteering for these things. I also agree, I grew up in Naperville. I chose to stay here and raise my kids here because District 204 is arguably one of the best districts in the country. There's a reason why people choose to live here and pay these high taxes, is for the quality of education that our children get. But I will tell you that I've got a freshman at Mississippi, and what my sophomore is getting at Niqua Valley does not nearly compare to what my daughter got when she was at Niqua. I mean, we are doing permanent damage to our students, long-term, permanent damage. Enough is enough. Make some decisions. Move forward and get our kids back in school. My daughter has IEPs. When she gets the help she needs, she does fantastically well at school. Right now, her GPA is on the way to being in a position where she won't get into college, period. Are you going to relegate her to a minimum-wage job because you can't make a decision and get our children back into school? Districts all around us are back in school. Bennett never got out of school. Are you telling me that the Catholic schools, that the private schools can do a better job than 204? For 20 years, as I've lived here and my kids have gone to this school district, we've always been able to say that the district was better than the schools around us. And now you're here telling us that you're not? I don't understand that. I don't believe that. Do better. Do better now. Get the kids back into school. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Williams.
Hello. The role of the board is to ensure that school districts are responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of their communities, providing leadership as advocates for children, the district, and public schools. I stand here tonight in front of you not only as an advocate for my son, a fifth grader at Springbrook Elementary, but for all children in this district. They do not deserve to be trapped between this political tug-of-war between the union and the district. Your job as a board is to listen to the people and to hold the superintendent accountable. If you can't listen to us and do your jobs, maybe you should ask yourselves why you're still here. If you are not able to make these kinds of decisions, then step out of the way and let somebody else do it. We are simply asking for the equity that you apparently promote. However, there is not a choice for those that wish to return to in-person, full-time school. I have three local sources in our county that have addressed their concern for the mental health of the whole child. A longtime psychiatric nurse states that Lyndon Oaks adolescent admissions are up over 150%. A local and sought-after mental health professional who has been in this field for 15-plus years states that most of my clients in this age group are expressing that they feel alienated, isolated, lonely, and frustrated with the circumstances. In general, motivation is very low, and there are more frequent feelings of hopelessness about the current experience. These overwhelming feelings combined with the situation have and will continue to hinder the developmental milestones associated with the adolescent and teenage years. There is a natural shift from closeness with adults to a feeling of strength and relatedness amongst peers. This is the way our kids connect and how they feel good. It is a purpose and a process that is so important to protect for them during this significant time in their development. Additionally, seeing classmates over a Zoom screen fails to engage most younger children. The fundamental social connectedness part of the school experience is lost as children sit alone in front of a screen. The very nature of remote learning stands in the way of many milestones, and the long-term impact of this situation is highly concerning. As for me personally, being involved with an organization like CASA, a corner-appointed child advocate, I'm well aware of the rise in neglect and abuse cases over the last year. Dubage County juvenile abuse and neglect cases are up 14% in the last year. So again, I stand here with a petition signed by 1,194 families. So again, I stand here with a petition signed by 1,194 families since Wednesday evening that are requesting the choice to send our children back to school. So here's your petition. Here's your comments. Make some choices.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Singer.
Hello, my name is Dr. Todd Singer. I've been a radiologist at Edward Hospital for 17 years. As a hospital-based physician, I've seen the devastation this virus has brought to our community as well as the scientific and medical triumphs that have saved countless lives. People have become consumed with fear, doubt, and uncertainty, and I can't entirely blame them as there is a constant barrage of sickness, death, and dread from every media outlet. Hopefully, I can shed a little light on the darkness. As someone who has studied radiohead sciences his entire life, I implore the board to open their minds and really hear the science. At Edward, we have performed many procedures, including central lines, dialysis catheters, chest tubes, lumbar punctures, to name a few, on COVID patients without a single transmission of the virus to a member of my group. All 17 doctors in my group have walked the same corridors as transported thousands of COVID-positive patients from ER to CT without a single transmission in my group. For overwhelming majority of the time, we were wearing just everyday disposable masks. Procedures are done at close distances, face-to-face, and there's no social distancing possible, and the take-home message is that masks do work at significantly reducing transmission, even in close quarters. When COVID first appeared, the world went into high alert for good reason. I've listed five reasons why schools and the nation shut down and why they are no longer valid. Number one, it was a novel coronavirus at the time. As of today, nearly one-third of the US population has contracted the virus when accounting for asymptomatic cases. Therefore, natural immunity has developed. Number two, the mortality rate was first reported to be 3% by the World Health Organization. The actual number is around .3% to .5% according to CDC. At Edward, there has been a 40% reduction in mortality between the first wave in the spring and the second wave currently now. There has been no... Number three, there was no medical therapy. Now there's therapeutics such as remdesivir, steroids, monoclonal antibodies, have all been approved or recommended by the FDA, along with better treatments such as proning and delayed intubation. The tide of the disease has turned. Number four, there is a threat of hospitals being overwhelmed. While the system was stretched, it never broke. Edward was able to expand ICU beds. Medicines were in ample supply. We never ran out of ventilators, and staffing was adequate throughout the pandemic. The fears of rationing never came to fruition. After peaking at over 110 patients, we're now down to approximately 11. Number five, there was no vaccine. Obviously, there are two highly effective vaccines that are 95% effective, and according to Dr. Fauci and studies out of Israel, the studies show that not only does it prevent the disease, but prevents transmission, which is very important to ending the pandemic. The positivity rate has fallen below the CDC threshold for in-person learning. The guidance recommends six feet when possible. It's not an absolute rule for necessarily safely opening schools. Kids are less symptomatic. They do not transmit the virus nearly as much, and kids rarely develop serious illness. The CDC has said in their website, right on there, that in-person learning does not contribute to community spread. To sum up, science is beating the pandemic. We can now both prevent and treat the virus. Unfortunately, we have a culture of fear that affects our decision-making. As a physician, I explain the risks and benefits of high-risk procedures I do every day. It's called informed consent because the education of the patient is key. I hope I have educated you a little bit on the science. Clearly, we are at a time when the benefits outweigh the risk. It's time for our children to return to school full-time.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Kelly, and I'm struggling with reading the last name. Could you help me with that, please?
Hello, everybody. My name is Kelly, and I'm a proud mother of three District 204 students. I'm also a nurse practitioner with over 24 years of pediatric experience, which some of that is spent in public health. I am here to urge you to continue expanding in-person education back to a five-day-per-week model for all of those that choose in-person learning. Frankly, hybrid isn't working, and many districts are starting to abandon this model. The CDC has recently stated that schools should be the last to close and the first to open within a community. In addition, there have been many studies to support fully reopening schools due to the negative effects of remote learning. Recently, pediatric academics and mental health have both been on the decline, while there are rising incidents of child abuse. Research has shown repeatedly that schools do not spread COVID, and this hybrid model is exhausting and burning out our wonderful 204 teachers. Considering the recent CDC recommendations of opening schools first and closing last, why are 204 schools barely open for children to access for education while places where children gather, such as Urban Air, Aurora Skate, restaurants, Funtopia, the Fox Valley Mall, Rocket Ice Arena, are wide open? I'm not condemning the places I mentioned because under Illinois Phase IV mitigations, no one is breaking any rules by attending these businesses in our community. However, this brings me to comments made by Ms. Peel last meeting. She commented how complex of a situation we are in and how opening the schools is a risk to the community and public health is at the center of this framework. The CDC has also reportedly tied school opening to community spread. I can respect this consideration for our community, but her comments made me wonder, could keeping the schools closed be more of a risk to the community than opening them? Recent data showed Illinois had 1,624 more pediatric COVID cases per 100,000 population than Florida, but have 91% less of their kids in-person learning five days per week. Illinois had 1,433 more pediatric COVID cases per same population in Ohio, but once again, 23% less in-person learning. Studies are starting to show that communities with more in-person learning are having less COVID spread. I feel keeping our schools closed is not only failing our kids, but our community. For example, wouldn't it be better for the community to open high school for a full day and hold lunch at the high school in a very controlled environment versus letting approximately 500 hungry kids per high school per day out at 12:30? Kids are not going home at 12:30. They're going out to eat in large groups at restaurants in our community. Wouldn't it also be wiser to have elementary kids maintain the entire school day with the same kids, first letting them out at 11:30 to grocery shop with parents, go to a sitter's house with other kids, or maybe even enjoying some ball pit time at Urban Air? 204 is not only destroying our kids' future, but letting down our entire community. Kids belong in school five days per week, full-time, not unleashed freely in our community with absolutely nothing to do. Public school kids in our community have been treated poorly this entire pandemic. It is time for the district to open up the school for five days a week learning for those that choose, not only for our kids, but for our community, because honestly, District 204 is failing both at this point.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Ketska. Might need to pull the mic down.
Yeah. All right, Brady. Sure. Okay.
Can you take it off the...
Yeah. I'm Andrea Ketsa. I have two children in the district. I have a nine-year-old and a seven-year-old. Our daughter, who's nine, was going to be here tonight. However, she's been involved in a gymnastics team, and I felt instead of pulling her out, it was more important for her to be at her gymnastics because that's the only thing that's keeping her going through this pandemic. I was going to read my son's letter tonight, but he's had the courage tonight to read his letter to all of you. His name is Braden Ketsa. He goes by Brady, and he wrote from his own opinion how this hybrid learning has been going, and he'd like to read it. You want me to read Kami's first? Are you a little nervous? Okay. All right, I'm going to read daughter's first. First, I want to say I appreciate all of the teachers in this district. I started my career as a school social worker, and I left schools to be home more for my children and take an at-home work, work-from-home job almost a decade ago. And now we're around each other 24/7. So I appreciate all of the teachers. I know this has been extremely stressful for them, and I found myself, as a social worker, calling a school social worker today for help because we are having a hard time at our home. I'm going to read my daughter's letter. Her name is Kami Ketsa. Hi, my name is Kami Ketsa. I'm in fourth grade. I go to Steck Elementary School. I moved here in third grade. Third grade started out great, but COVID started, and I think this school was really unorganized. I only did two Zooms in third grade. This year is a little better, but I do not think I'm getting the right education. I did not even finish my first year at my new school. I think you guys should let me go back to school for full days. I know we're going to school in the morning, but it's only for two hours. I do not know if everyone feels this, but it is really stressful on me and my parents. I know times are rough, especially these times, but most kids are not getting enough education or are not good at Zoom. Like I said, we are going to school for two hours. Two hours for me is not enough time in person, so I beg you, please put us in person full days. This year, I'm not making any new friendships. I do see my teacher in person, but I would really like to get to know her better. And I'm upset you guys are not changing much. It is hard to transition to other classes if I am in Zoom and that class is over, and it's hard to get to another class because we have to go to that Google classroom and find the new Zoom. So people are often late, and I have also been guilty of forgetting to go to the right Zoom. Thank you for listening from Kami Ketsa, fourth grade, Steck Elementary School. I'd like you to please... I know the timer went off, but I'd like you to give my son a chance to speak.
We have two speakers. I'm going to count you as two speakers.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Braden Ketsa. I am seven years old. COVID and Zoom meetings are hard to understand what to do. I feel angry because of COVID. I don't like COVID with school. I miss teachers and friends. I miss recess with my buddies. I really miss school, and I don't like Zoom. It's also miss PE class. Please let kids go back to school full-time, and that Zoom kicks you out and you can't get back in. This is not fun. It is hard. I want to go back to school. Thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get it in. Did I hit you? Sorry about that. You did awesome. Thank you.
Hey, Brandon?
Braden.
Braden?
Is he okay?
Thanks, Braden.
Okay. He just... Yeah, he's fine. They said thank you.
Thank you, Braden.
Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Ms. Ward.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm not sure if we should just end on that comment because it's really hard to follow that. That tugs at your heartstrings, that kids are pleading to go back to school, pleading with adults to let them back into schools. My kids, last year, would have never pled to go to school, and now they're asking me, when are we going to go to school? It was a fight. I don't care if you live with your grandma, you're going to go to school. I don't care if you live with your cousin, you're going to go to school. We all go to school. And now they're like, Mom, please, please, when can we go back to school? I'm here to talk about a recent email I sent to the board. It included this picture, which may be difficult. I don't know if you've seen this. This is a school about 30 miles or 30 minutes away from Naperville. There's about 15 kids in this picture sitting shoulder to shoulder, no mask, no social distancing, recent picture in school, right here in Illinois. I asked the board, can someone logically explain to me how this can be happening just 30 minutes from Naperville? The faces are blurred, but I can tell you not one child has a mask on. Not one. No six-foot distancing issues. They're sharing Valentines with one another. School is five days a week. Stop with your excuses. If you can't figure out how to open our schools for five full days a week, then please resign from the board today and let someone else do the problem solving. I'm certain there are other volunteer opportunities in Naperville. You are failing our children, failing them. Every single one of you on this board and the administration are failing the students of District 204. Enough is enough. Open our schools. I got a response, and I appreciate that. Michael wrote me back, and he says, for your reference, the new CDC guidelines released yesterday. Given the guidelines, there's no logical explanation. That's it. No logical explanation of how these kids can be sitting in school and yet our kids cannot. I wrote back, which did not receive response. I've heard of these guidelines. They are just that, guidelines. Maybe we will see all the private schools and non-unionized public schools around the area shut down because of the new CDC guidelines. I wouldn't hold my breath waiting for that to happen. As you are probably aware, Iowa just signed a law that all schools have to offer full in-person learning. That darn COVID, it's so smart, it stops at the Iowa-Illinois border. Sadly, it appears that District 204 will sit back and use the latest round of guidelines as another excuse to keep our schools closed to full in-person learning. The lack of leadership in District 204 right now is disturbing. You were elected to represent the students and taxpayers of this district, not to continually cave to the teachers' union. When will you actually stand up for the children of this district? Do we just continue to ruin District 204 because the school board refuses to take action? Why are the seven of you even on this board if you're just going to turn everything over to Dr. Talley? We are paying Dr. Talley $255,000 yearly to hold COVID vaccine seminars and call pharmacies? This is beyond ridiculous. Enough is enough. Open our schools now. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Abels.
Good evening, board. My name is Josh Abels. I have a son in kindergarten in 204. Obviously, you heard from a lot of impassioned speakers today about reopening the schools. I guess I'll put a twist on it. My son has been doing remote for this entire year. The first half was actually pretty good, rough start, obviously, but it was new to everybody. This second half, though, has been pretty horrible. We switched from having student-teacher FaceTime for about five hours a day, and now he's down to about an hour and a half. His first half of the day is strictly online courses, and then the back half, he's got several breaks, an hour and a half of intervention time, and about an hour and a half of teacher FaceTime with his teacher or with his specials teacher. Obviously, this really doesn't work for him. He was doing pretty well in August through December, but now he's really suffering from the lack of FaceTime. So I'm just wondering, hopefully, with some good news that we're going to hear from you guys shortly, that there will also be some changes in your remote and hybrid options, too. Thank you.
That concludes the public comment for the agenda items. Now we move on to the discussion item on the COVID-19 update, reopening of schools. Dr. Talley?
Thank you, Mr. Carubis. And as the people come out. Mr. Carubis, members of the board and Indian Prairie community, tonight during our COVID-19 update, we will be sharing with you an update on metrics and a discussion about expanding in-person learning days for those who are in person. Throughout this year, we have tried to be consistent with our approach to the pandemic. We have been consistent by using the same data sources, which include the DuPage Health Department and information from the Illinois State Department of Public Health and the CDC. In an effort to be more granular in our approach, we have also added, a few months ago, information from Northwestern University. Data from these sources have guided us in our decision-making and have provided us with an understanding of the science we have continued to use. We have been saying from the beginning that we would always review and modify our plans. In fact, in the presentation, it's probably slide number three. We have also said that from the beginning, we would always look for how to increase in-person learning time for our students who wanted to come in, as well as maintain integrity of our remote program for students who are remote. integrity of our remote program for students who are remote. Recently, new information from the CDC has come out, and in tonight's presentation, we will discuss that information and how it will guide us. I want to applaud my team and the work they have done. I also want to applaud all the principals in their unending work that they are doing. They have worked with us constantly throughout this process to help us make our decisions. Some people think that decisions can be made with the snap of a finger when it comes to examining school schedules and making decisions about what can and cannot be done to modify these schedules. At the elementary level, there are more than 435 classes that our principals and the assistant superintendent for elementary school had to review to determine if we could combine A and B cohorts. That review could not be done until all the students had started in-person program. At the middle school level, each principal had to review almost 400 classes in their building to determine if classes could be combined. At the high school level, each high school principal had to review more than 1,000 classes to determine capacity with combining groups A and B. Additionally, once these classes were reviewed, the administrators had to find spaces in their buildings that could receive students in excess of our class-size guidelines. Our guidance has been that we will maintain our six feet of social distancing. In our current state of being at substantial transmission, we are following the guidance from the CDC and from DuPage. When we move out of substantial, we will, we will be, we will very much consider modifying our stance on six feet and follow the language that is mentioned in the CDC, which says, quote, "six feet to the greatest extent possible," which will give us more flexibility. By doing so, we will continue to follow the science. You'll hear more about this tonight and see an exact page from the CDC presentation. Though our plan tonight will talk about four days a week, we are not moving to five days a week. That will be discussed in our presentation as well and explanation as to why. Five days a week is not something we are considering for this year. However, as we plan for next year, I want I want to share with what I said at IPPC last week and what I shared at PTA President's Meeting a few months ago. Our plan is to have five days a week, full days, for the next school year. I, we feel that next year, with all staff vaccinated, who want to be vaccinated, and more importantly, with a change in delivery model that separates in-person learning and remote learning, we will be better set for full days next year. We are already starting that planning. We have to, due to what is required, especially at the high school level in creating master schedules. Though we have not heard from the state what requirements we have to have, we are planning for full days each day in-person learning, and if necessary, we'd have to have a separate remote learning option. Our plans provide options for in-person learning and supports our remote learners. I'll now turn it to Mr. Ricarius, our deputy, who will start the presentation.
Great. Good evening, Dr. Tally and Board of Education. I'm joined this evening by Mr. Hillman, who is the Assistant Superintendent, who's overseeing middle school and high school. And after we go through this part of the presentation, then Mrs. Rosenbloom, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary, will be coming out with three teachers to talk about the plan moving forward for elementary. You've seen this before. This is the goal that we've had this year, that we've been operating by to support a comprehensive educational program for the 2020-21 school year within the current guidelines provided by local, state, and federal health and safety officials. We have seen that those change quite often, and we've tried to provide as much consistency as possible while different metrics have changed. We started with the same process of developing a plan, validating the plan, and then monitoring and modifying, and we continue to do that. We have had public health at the center of this, surrounded by instructional core and SEL, operations, stakeholder communication, and resources. The state of Illinois is still in Phase IV revitalization, which does hold us to certain requirements. This is the same document that you've seen that was put out by DuPage for its school metrics guidance. As you know, we've been in substantial for quite some time, which was encouraging 100% remote learning, but gave the ability for the superintendent to make decisions that were outside of the 100% for remote learning. This just, as you know, this comes out late on Monday, so this just came out at 3:00 today, which is the most recent information we have from DuPage County on school metrics. What you'll see on this one is it's still showing substantial. All the arrows are pointing down. Some important ones to point out is just, we went from 133 down to 128 in cases per 100,000. We also went from 4.4% down to 4.2% in weekly test positivity. And I just bring up those two because of the new CDC guidance that came out, as those connect to that. Just staying consistent with our metrics, this is the, for our regions across the board. So we have Region 8, which includes DuPage, as well as Kane, and then Region 7, which includes Will, as well as Kankakee and statewide, just for consistency. We are down to 4.3 in Region 8, 4.5 in Region 7, and 3.49 across the state. Looking just at our two counties, we're down to 4.5% for Will County and 4.1% for DuPage. Just talking about our current metrics, data gathered from Northwestern University about ZIP codes reflects a seven-day rolling average. This is what we've been using. Northwestern was 4.32 on the 17th. DuPage County transmission level was substantial, as we've seen. DuPage County case trend is still declining, which is what we wanna see. And DuPage County positivity rate is actually down to 4.2%. As I said, that just came out a few hours ago. Outbreaks, which cannot be contained, no. Inability for contact tracing, no. We, we did have, over the last two weeks, 33 positive cases in our buildings, across 13 different buildings. For most of our situations that occur for students who are coming for in-person learning, we have not had to quarantine many students, and that has been connected to not having students within six feet for at least 15 minutes. We are still in good shape with PPE and having available staff to teach classes as well as run our offices. This was the previous CDC indicators and thresholds for risks of introduction and transmission of COVID-19 in schools. This was over 14 days. We've had this in our presentation. They look at the last 14 days for cases per 100,000, as well as positive activity tests for the past 14 days. And so this was what we were using previously, so I'm gonna go into the updated CDC indicators and thresholds. The metrics that they're using in there have changed from looking at the past 14 days to looking at total new cases per 100,000 persons in the past seven days, percentage of the positives during the last seven days as well, the positive transmission rate that we look at. One of the things there, because this was, you know, just to be honest, frustrating when we look at it and we see, we've been excited about where our positivity rates are. We see that they're under 5%, which would put us in the blue. And then we look at our cases per 100,000, which is in the high area. In the, and this is where I say the frustrating part is, CDC indicates that if the two indicators suggest different levels, the actions corresponding to the higher-level threshold should be chosen. County-level data on the total new case in the past seven days and test percent positivity. So, you know, obviously, this has been a challenge for us to see how can we be on both ends of the spectrum here. When we look at DuPage County, the most recent data was, cases per 100,000 was 128. That's as of 2/13. That came out today. The positivity rate was down at 4.2%. And as we look at the Northwestern data for the ZIP codes, cases per seven, over the last seven days, 145.7, and 4.32%, and that was on the 17th for positivity rate. From there, it breaks down into, what does this mean for mitigation strategies? As it said on there, what the CDC recommends is that if one is in one category and one's in another category, you're supposed to go with the highest category. That's indicating that, as you see, under HAGG transmission red, like middle and high schools in virtual-only instruction, unless they can strictly implement all mitigation strategies and have few cases. Schools that are already open for in-person instruction can remain open, but only if they strictly implement mitigation strategies and have few cases. We feel like we are following this. It says elementary schools in hybrid learning mode, or reduced attendance, physical distancing of six feet or more is required. You'll see that they have that across both the substantial transmission as well as the high transmission. Those also had some footnotes to point out to it, including, some of them connect to the ones if you are in high or substantial. Or if we get down to the lower ones, you'll see under footnote three, if physical distancing is at least six feet among all students, teacher, and staff within a class cohort or pod is not possible, at all times, schools should ensure physical distancing between classes, cohorts, and pods. I just wanna be as transparent as possible with all information that is in this document. With that, I'm gonna move over to Mr. Hillman, who's gonna talk first about middle school and then about high schools.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and Dr. Tally. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and to share a little bit of the work that has been taking place within the middle school and the high schools. Before I begin that, though, I do want to give a thank you to the building principals that I have the pleasure of working with. I have said on many occasions that I think I have the best job in the entire district as the assistant super who gets to work with the middle school principals, because I think they're amazing, along with the teachers that I work with. But that continues to be even more apparent to me that I have a great job when I work with the high school principals and I get to hear their passion for getting students in and their passion for being with parents. So I just wanna give a thank you to them because they humor me with all of my questions and the things that I ask of them in order to be able to get ready for tonight and to be able to bring students in four days a week. So tonight's presentation, while I am the person who's talking, they're the person, they are the people who are doing a lot of the work in the buildings, and for that, I'm very appreciative. Currently, where we are, we have started rooming and zooming. For those of you who aren't quite familiar with that, that is where we have students who are in the room, being taught by teachers in the room, but we also do have students who are on Zoom, learning remotely at home. So that has begun. We have been setting up safety protocols that ensure that we are following the six feet of social distancing at all times. Mask-wearing is taking place, and we have rearranged our traffic patterns, both inside and out of the building, to ensure that we have the best traffic flow possible. We've also required self-certification for all students who are coming into the building. And after hearing some feedback from the high schools about the difficulty of that, we've also begun to open that self-certification up to students directly on the app, not just through their parents. We also have moved to some of our students coming into the building currently four days per week. Those students who have demonstrated an academic and/or social-emotional need have started to come in four days a week. These primary, these students primarily receive special education services, 504 plans, or they are currently in an intervention program. So based on all of this work, we are currently reviewing data about the potential of increasing the number of students that we are gonna be bringing into the building at the middle school and high school level. And so what I would like to point out is that at the middle school level on this slide, we have been reviewing all of our schedules, reviewing all of our current hybrid students, where they're at, maintaining social distancing, and looking at all of our classroom spaces to ensure that we can have as many students in and still maintain the six feet of social distancing. One of the issues, though, that I wanna point out is that some of our larger spaces, we have had to use for other purposes. So when we have staff members who are in, some of our TAs, teaching assistants who are in the building, we do have to set up special places for them to be able to zoom in at times, so that has taken up some of our space. We also have had to essentially close our cafeterias to allow our band students, after they have played the maximum number of minutes, in the, in the band room, to be able to go into another location so that way we can have an air exchange with inside of that room. And then we also have used some of our larger spaces for those classes that have students who are over the number of 12 or 14 on their A or B day. So what we have done is we have looked at every schedule, every roster, every period, and we have counted every student. And what we have come to is this idea that bringing students in is gonna, increasing the number of students who come in, that ability varies by building and also within a building by period. And we're gonna talk about that here in just a few minutes when we get to that piece. But next, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page about what we're planning for bringing kids in four days per week. We're looking at the, keeping the current middle school schedule. The current middle school schedule was designed to be able to effectively allow those students who are going to be in remote learning to have a, an appropriate amount of screen time for a particular day. And we do have to remember that we are going to be having students who are learning simultaneously both in the building and by Zoom. So therefore, we have to honor both of those two students pieces, and we're doing that by maintaining the current schedule. This current schedule does not have our students eating lunch in, inside the building, and that is for several reasons. One, because of only being, because of the six feet of social distancing and the cap of 50 people in one particular environment, we have to spread our students out into many places. Most of our, our buildings, when they have lunch, they have a grade level eating at an entire time. If you look at a building that just has 900 kids, the math would say that there's about 300 students that we are putting into one cafeteria. That obviously, if we were to break that down, we would need six cafeterias in order to be able to maintain that at 50 students per, per lunch area. So that's just simply not something that we have the space to be able to do, so lunch is very problematic for us. It's also problematic because the cafeteria, as I've mentioned previously, we have had to use for other requirements with inside the building. And finally, students eating inside the environment and having to take their masks off for an extended period of time would also be somewhat problematic. The also other piece in looking at, the other piece
Public comment is over. Let them, let them present. Public comment's over.
In looking at this schedule, this schedule also does the benefit, again, of maintaining the appropriate amount of screen time associated with our students who are going to be at home and who have selected that. This schedule also will be acceptable should the metrics worsen and we end up or become more negative, that we would have the ability to maintain a consistent schedule for our students. So on the next slide, please. What this next slide does is, we have gone through and been looking at a lot of the data that is with inside of buildings. One of the big issues that we have to work, look at is our room utilization percentages. And right now, the percentages that you're seeing there, look at a, a building and saying that a room is available at the middle school, the schedule is nine periods long, there are nine periods, how many of those periods is the schedule being utilized? And that's what that's showing for all of our rooms, adding that up and looking at it. And you can see that we range from Gregory at 67% of the rooms being utilized, all the way up to 93% at Skellin. That's just one piece of the puzzle. The other part of the puzzle is that we do have a very wide range of students who have selected hybrid, meaning the number of students who have selected to be able to come into the buildings two days a week. You see that we have, on the low side, I believe, it's at 35% at Granger and up into the 50s at Gregory and Chrome. So that's another component that we have had to factor in. And most of that does work in our favor as approximately less than half of our kids have elected to be able to come into the building and have elected to stay remotely. So the next two columns take a little bit of time for me to explain, so I do apologize for that. The first column is the lowest percentage of classes that support A and B combined by period. What this means is that when we look at every period within the building, 18% of the, at one period, 18% of our class 18% of the, at one period, 18% of our classes at Fisher would exceed the number of students who can be in that particular room in a period. So it could be third period, for example, at Fisher, where 18% of the classes would not, would be, would exceed the number of kids that we can have in. But on another period, you notice that 70% of those classes could potentially run with all of the current A and B students coming in. So you see that we have quite a range that is there from 18 and 24, all the way up to the high side of being able to run between 87 and 83% of our classes. I point this out to you because we do have some concerns about when we do bring in our A and B students together, that we will not be able to fit all of our students with inside of a classroom at any given time. To highlight this to a greater degree, if you'd go to the next slide, this is a concrete example of one of our middle schools. And so what I would like to point out is first period. You see that there are 28 classes that are offered during first period. 13 of those classes are over the number of kids if we bring in A and B students at the same time, which then means that we need to find space for those other students. That means in this particular example, the concrete number is that we would have 46 students in this particular building that we would have to find alternative learning spaces for when they are in. We would also have to be able to touch those schedules to be able to make sure that we are assigning those students to a particular spot so that way classes can start on time and that we have good, an appropriate amount of monitoring going on inside the building. So our building principals have been working on finding those alternative learning spaces. And in a later, in a later slide at the high school, I'm going to show you what that, what that looks like and all buildings are working on the same type of, same type of image. We've done this for all of our class periods at this, at this middle school. And you see that it ranges in the low side of having 32 students that we need to find an alternative learning space for, all the way up to 50, I believe, 52. The other part that I want to point out to you is that this one middle school, we have 126 classes that are going to be over the limit during the course of a school day. This means that 126 schedules of rosters must be reviewed, and we want to be able to make sure that a single student who comes to school on a given day does not have to be in an alternative learning space for all of their classes. So for example, if Justin were to be one of the schedules that we were looking at, we would not want to see Justin be assigned to an alternative learning space during first period, second period, and third period, when Justin thought he was coming to school to actually be with inside the classroom. So what we would work with the teachers is to be able to say, okay, Justin might be assigned first period, but let's make sure that Justin is not assigned an alternative learning space for his learning during the rest of his day, if we can make that happen, so that be, and that is going to be dependent upon numbers. Right now, in the current setting for this particular middle school, it does look like that this can happen. As I was doing the data and sharing this information with the building principals, they also have been going back and looking at all of their buildings. And I can tell you that this building is right in the middle. There are some buildings that are a little bit lower as far as the number of kids that they're going to have to find alternative learning spaces for, but there are some middle schools that will have to have almost, will have to have space for almost 80 to 90 students per period that they would have to find another learning space for. So this is one of the pieces that we're, we're having to work through with the six feet of social distancing. So hopefully, I explained that graph and the realities of what the middle school principals have been working through fairly accurately. So Mr. Rising, it looks like you have a question for me.
Just, just right there, because I don't want to have to go back to it again. So the buildings, for instance, where there are a higher number of students we have to find alternative learning spaces for, at the high end, you said like it could be 80 students, right? Did the principals go through or the teachers go through and say, hey, listen, where could we put those kids? And is that, is that a reality or a possibility? They look at that.
So what we're looking at is that we, at the middle school level, I know that you know our buildings very well, but for those who don't, we have two basic models, right? We have an older set of buildings that were built on one model with the hallways being a little smaller, locker banks being built into the wall, and they really don't have a lot of what I consider to be common spaces. Those, that would be Fisher, Gregory, Fisher, Gregory, and Hill. Okay? That presents one set of unique issues. Our other buildings that are built on the newer model, the Crohn's, Skellins', Grangers', and Stills', they do have a few more common spaces that we are going to be able to utilize to be able to have students in those places. But our buildings are actively looking for all of those right now and being able to come up with some subtle changes that they would be able to make to increase those spaces. I will tell you that I am very nervous about the older buildings and their ability to accommodate overflow students because their hallways are much skinnier, if, when, and if you think about being upstairs at Hill or, or at Hill or Gregory, I mean, I'm not a, those halls, you can almost touch side to side. And by the time you have students who are in them, having desks in those hallways is going to be very challenging. So I do have some concerns about that.
But it could be doable.
Depending upon the number, that is going to be a limiter for those buildings as far as the number of kids who want to come in. All right. Any other questions at this time?
I guess my follow-up on that, right here.
Sorry.
Sorry. When you say a limiter, so are you saying it's a possibility one of our, or two of our schools would not be able to do this?
I'm saying that it would be a potential that's, that are, are buildings that are built on the old model, that the number of kids that we can accommodate in overflow is significantly smaller than the other buildings, and therefore, we may not be able to have all the students who want to select being four days a week. We may not be able to accommodate all of them.
Okay. And when do they decide after choosing the four days a week? Are you getting to that?
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
Seeing no other questions at this, yes.
Once it starts to get warmer out, and they could take PE outside, for instance, there might be some opportunities there to-
Oh, most certainly. That does free up some of the, some of those classrooms as far as being able to utilize as alternative learning spaces. But we still have to have a Plan B for if there is inclement weather on those days. Next slide. So at the high school, we've kind of done the same thing, just on a grander scale. Because our high schools are somewhere along the lines of two and a half to three and a half times larger than our middle schools, and they have been doing the same thing. We have been looking at our current hybrid students and what our hybrid schedule looks like, how to maintain the six feet of social distancing. Their typical classrooms are being able to accommodate 14 to 16 students, and they also have had to start looking at some of their larger spaces in order to accommodate what is currently happening within the building. And finally, they are also in the process of looking at every teacher's roster, along with every student's schedule, and they are counting students, counting students as accurately as they are able to. So on the next slide, I just want to remind everybody that this is our current high school schedule. You'll notice that we have on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, the A through L. Thursday and Friday, the M through Z. And we would be considered, we would be keeping this schedule as well for the same reasons that I referenced in, in the middle school. The lunch component is actually a little bit more of a more difficult problem for us to solve at the high schools because, again, we have very large cafeterias that we are capped at 50 to be able to maintain. And some of our lunch periods at our high schools are already probably over, over, maybe overcapacity already. And now we have to find other locations for those students to be able to eat. The high schools have helped solve some of this issue by allowing those students who have lunch fourth period on Tuesdays to be able to leave early, and those students who have lunch during fifth period to come a little late and come on six, come at the start of sixth period to be able to reduce that overcrowding on those at that time. In the next slide, the high schools also have been looking at their room utilization along with the percentage of students who have selected hybrid. You see that we have quite the range there with 36% of the students selecting hybrid at Matia Valley and right around half of the students selecting hybrid at Burkett and also Obanzi Valley. The room utilization is also something that they've been looking at. One of the things to keep in mind is that the room utilization is going to vary between the buildings because of their different number of rooms, but also because of the types of courses that students have selected when they have chosen to come in. That also impacts our room utilization. And then finally, they've also been looking at what is the number, what's that percentage of classrooms that are going to be available for, that can house all of our current A and B students when we bring them in four days a week? And you see there that Matia Valley looks at 93% of their classes being able to run, but that number drops to in the 60s for Burkett and Niqua. Next slide. So when we talked about this idea that we would have alternative learning spaces, one of the buildings has given you kind of an image of what that would look like. This is Niqua Valley High School, if you didn't recognize the layout there. And what they have done is they have identified the places where they believe that they can house students in an alternative learning location, and those numbers indicate the number of students that they believe that they can house in each one of those locations. Additionally, they have provided a graphic that shows that some of those learning, alternative learning locations are going to be in locker banks. And that is a reality that we have to face, is that when we bring students in and we give them choice and we try to bring in as many kids as we can into the hybrid setting, we simply will have classes that will be too full, and therefore, we will have to have students who are in alternative learning spaces. If I've done my math correctly, or if I remember the math that Dr. Fierer did for me earlier, I believe that that is about 136 or 130-ish spaces that we would have to be able to house students in an alternative learning location. I would like to draw that number to your attention because 136 is at a building that is very large, very spacious, and is relatively new, especially when it's compared to its middle school counterparts that are much smaller and also, in some cases, not quite as, as new. So that's the, the information about the, the things that the buildings have been working on, the things that the buildings are considering as they begin to move into their next steps. Mr. Karius, if we can go to the next slide while I take a brief drink. Finally, next steps. My middle school and high school are preparing for four days a week. We're looking at students coming into the building four days per week or being remote only. One of the things that we have experienced a little bit is that some of our students have known that when they're, they've selected hybrid, that they are able to learn remotely and join in the Zoom. So that has, in some cases, impacted the numbers for which we have planned for. And I do have some of the same concerns when it comes to our current plan, is that we are going to have some students who are going to tell us that we want to be in person four days a week, but on some days, will make the selection to stay home and join in from the Zoom. One of the issues for that is just simply if that's a choice that a student is going to make on a regular basis, that does potentially decrease the number of kids that we can bring in, and it also takes away from the number of kids who could be in class if they had chosen to be remote only. The other part that I want to point out to this is that not all students in all schools will be able to attend due to the limited capacity at all of our buildings. So if, at the middle school level, I did the math, I looked at some of our class sizes, we have some classes that run as high as 37 in the middle school level. We balance our classes at 30. If we have 60% or more of our students coming in, the number of students that, that go to the overflow is going to escalate severely just simply because of the math being able to, to do for some of our classes. So we may have some, some places where we are not able to accommodate all the students who would like to come in. Additionally, with inside the building, we are going to have students who are going to be learning in an alternative learning location and having to Zoom into the class that is happening in the building that they are currently at because they will be in an alternative learning location. So that communication about when that's going to be happening is going to be coming out to parents tomorrow. That choice needs to be made. It says there, March 1st. We would like that choice made by February 26th, but we will honor the March 1st date because it is there. Hybrid students will be moved to four days unless parents communicate to the school that they want to go remote only. And remote students will be staying remote unless parents communicate to the school that they would like to come in to the session in hybrid. Our four days a week plan will be completed when students return from spring break. We are actually going to be transitioning sooner than spring break as we can accommodate that at different levels. My assumption is that the middle schools might be a little bit sooner than the high schools just because they are smaller at being able to come in four days a week. But before we can commit to that actual date of any earlier than spring break, we need to know how many students we are planning for. The planning for students is an integral part of what it is that we are able to accomplish because at all, both levels, we do want to make sure that we have the appropriate number of alternate learning spaces for those classes where we have too many students. And that is a very real concern of the building principals and myself. So with that, Mr. Karius?
So with that, we'll go to any board questions. And remember, we're going to bring elementary on next.
Ms. Grover?
How do parents communicate if they want to go remote or the four days?
So what is going to happen is that the, there will be an email that will be coming out after Dr. Tally's email tomorrow morning. That email will be coming directly from the building principal to all families. And in the building, and each building will have a mechanism to be able to communicate that. Most likely, it will be a Google form or a Google survey that they will then fill out. The building principals will get all of that information in one spot by March 1st at the latest, and then they will begin the process of determining how many students they're able to bring in and then communicating that out to parents who is able to come in.
And then, I don't know if this is a question for Dr. Tally, but, so my understanding is that the four days alternate space is happening because of the six feet. And we're looking at the CDC and DuPage guidelines. Is the saliva testing that we are doing, is that going to be part of the guidelines that we will be using to determine if six feet would be a possibility?
So if we, Mr. Karius, can you go back to the slide? I think it's 14?
I think it was this one.
The, the one with the CDC with the blue, yellow, orange, that's the one, yes. So the, when we look at the CDC guidance, and we are in substantial right now, it does state that six feet is required.
Please, please help me conduct an orderly board meeting.
When we are in moderate, in the blue or the yellow, it does say at the extent possible. When we are using the guidance from them, we are using the cases per 100,000 and also the positivity rate. If the two are different, as Mr. Karius mentioned, we have to go with the higher of the two to determine our rate. So the six, the saliva testing that we are doing, the surveillance testing, is a voluntary one. We have approximately 1,000 students who are doing it. So it's not a lot of students, nor a lot of staff who are doing it. That testing in and of itself would not be able to move us in one direction or the other. What we want to be able to do, and what I think we'll be able to do, is that once we're in the moderate range, which I think may happen by mid-March, it will allow us to have a, to, to reduce our six feet of, of, of social distancing in our schools and our classrooms, and then therefore, the students who are in the alternative learning places would be able to come into the classrooms.
Ms. Donahue?
So, following up on that, if, if we were at three feet, it helps us get everybody in the classroom, or hopefully, most of them, but it doesn't get us ever to five days a week full-time in school.
No, and I think we want to look at the chart on, if we look at the schedule for middle school students, table 18, slide 18, and we look at that. So the Monday is a Monday where the students have all of their classes. It's also a day when the teachers are able to meet with all of their students, both in-person and remote. And it is also a day similar at the elementary level- And it is also a day, similar at the elementary level, that will be discussed, where we can do assessments for remote students. And so if we eliminated Mondays and made them an in-person day, some of the things that we are able to do with our students and our, we would not be able to do. At the high school level, the same schedule is there. If you switch to that slide, Mr. Karius, you can see that the high school schedule Monday, the students are able to meet with all of their teachers on that day. But then again, as I said, it also provides opportunity for us to do some things with our remote students that we need to be able to do.
Right. And we still have about half of our students that are remote, correct?
Actually, right now, if we look at it, we have more of our students are remote than by about a thousand students compared to in-person.
So if a family want, wanted two days of hybrid and not four days, do they have that option?
We talked about that today, and that's really a problem in the sense of continuity of programming in the classroom and in the schools. I don't know if Mr. Hillman or Mr. Karius should want to speak to that?
So in having that conversation with the building principals, we really feel that as we want to move towards five days a week, it is better for students to be able to come in four days, and so that is the, that is how we're planning. Whether or not a student comes in two days or four days, we still have to accommodate a space for them, so we will be setting aside a space for them, and we feel that if you're going to take that space, we want to see you in four days a week.
Okay. And if there is space in rooms, it's probably a difficult question for middle school and high school. Can people say, "I was remote, and now I want to be hybrid because I, I want to fit in," or whatever, like, can I fit in? Numbers say everything. I mean, when people go, "Well, just slide these kids in," it's like, we need to know exactly how many kids are coming in for each class, and it's a very complex formula to look at this. And I guess I'm asking though, if, if somebody said they were remote, and now they see, you know, four days a week, can they switch?
At this time, we're looking at the, the March first date as being the final date to be able to declare that you want to come in for hybrid learning because of the amount of planning that is required. Additionally, being able to fit kids in and add more kids to classes, I don't see any one student potentially having a class that they are not going to have to be in an alternative learning space at this time. So it, it just simply adds to the compounding problem of our alternative learning space, and we would like to plan for that once and be able to put the best foot, best program forward for all of our kids.
So, so if we have to do, for those spaces where we have to find alternative locations for students, what does that do for rooming and zooming for the students that are remote? And having to find a space for the students that will have to Zoom in for school?
I'm not sure that I fully understand the question.
So we're doing rooming and zooming?
Yep.
Okay. So will we, that, does that mean that if there is a class where the teacher is rooming and zooming because they, the teacher has students that are remote?
Hmm.
But then additionally, if we have students that, and maybe technically it's, I'm asking the question. So technically, if we have to have students who also have to be in an alternate, alternate space that have to Zoom into the class, we're able to do that?
We are able to do that. We do have some concerns that if we have too many kids gathered in one spot, all zooming or streaming video at the same time, that that could negatively impact, which is why we're looking at as many spaces as possible to make sure that we don't overload one particular Wi-Fi router at a time, but we think we can pull that off. Because we are limiting students who are in school. We are not allowing them to Zoom or stream video at that time, so we're not overloading that particular part of the network, and we would continue that practice.
And for those students that, where we're going to have to find that alternate space, what, how are we handling the, are there going to be TAs, or they're going to be, what will happen with?
So we're going to have multiple different pieces. In some cases, we will end up having TAs who will also be in the same space, having to Zoom in because of supporting students who are learning remotely. And so we still have to have, meet those requirements, so they could potentially be an adult figure who is present. We also are going to be looking at utilizing deans, assistants, deans at the high school along with any available staff member. It will be all hands on deck to be able to assist in that process, and I think a lot of it just depends upon the volume of students who elect to come into the building, how many adults we will need to have on hand.
Thank you.
Ms. Peel?
Just a follow-up question again. You said that the students who are in-person are not going to be on the, using the technology or the internet, correct?
Just the ones in the classroom wouldn't be using that?
Just the ones in the classroom. They'll be able to use the internet. Internet usage does not have nearly the drain on the Wi-Fi requirements as does streaming video. Streaming video has much more data associated with it, so that's why we wouldn't be asking them to Zoom while they are sitting in the classroom with the teacher.
So it's just the Zooming part that you're limiting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rising?
So, and Doug, I don't want to put you on a hot seat here, but I'm struggling with the numbers we're seeing from DuPage and from Northwestern, and I'll tell you why. And actually, even before we talk about that, let's go to that CDC, that, the details on that, which is slide fifteen.
Can you get closer to your mic?
Yeah, slide fifteen.
You want fifteen?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have bounced around so much. So, if we're looking at these new CDC guidelines, and where we thought we were, you know, in substantial, or moving towards minimal in DuPage, and now we look at these ridiculous CDC numbers, and we're at, so essentially, that hundred and twenty-eight per hundred thousand that DuPage says, we were substantial, which was trending in a great direction to moderate, and now we get these CDC numbers, and now they're telling us it's, our numbers aren't good anymore. So, so I'm frustrated by that, first of all, because, you know, we've got the lowest positivity rate in the state and in this county than we've had since July, and it's ridiculous that we're not letting these kids in the school more. So if you could go back to slide seven, where I'm really having problems with DuPage's numbers and Northwestern's, is today, so these are DuPage County numbers, right? So today in DuPage County, there were a hundred and twenty-five new cases of COVID. But this number is telling me there's a hundred and twenty-eight per hundred thousand, and Northwestern is telling me there's a hundred and thirty-three per hundred thousand, but yet, there were only a hundred and twenty-five cases in DuPage today. So I'm very confused by that. So I took it a step further and looked at John Hopkins' numbers. And John Hopkins looks at every county because they get numbers from the counties, from the states, so on and so forth. And John Hopkins' numbers says that DuPage County has a rolling seven-day average per hundred thousand of nineteen cases per hundred thousand. But DuPage is telling me a hundred and twenty-eight per hundred thousand. So I'm confused how John Hopkins has nineteen per hundred thousand and DuPage has a hundred and twenty-eight. Something's not making sense there. I don't know if it's Illinois, I don't know if it's John Hopkins, I don't know if it's DuPage, but I'm feeling, what I'm trying as a board member, and we're all trying as a board member, to get kids in school more, and to do it in a safe way that, no matter where your perception on this, and again, this is, has everything to do with perception, right? Because we can split the science, the data, any about numbers, ways we want to, but it comes down to perception. I'm trying to get my head clear on perception here, and I'm feeling like somewhere, it's not making sense. And again, I'm not blaming this on you, Doug, please don't take this the wrong way, but I, I started looking at these numbers, and I'm like, DuPage has nineteen cases per hundred thousand, Will County has twenty-two cases per hundred thousand, Cook County, Cook and Kane are actually less than DuPage and Will at seventeen per hundred thousand and eighteen per hundred thousand. Those are the John Hopkins numbers. So how could John Hopkins be telling me one thing, and, and IDPH and DuPage are telling me another thing? It's just, it, it's frustrating because, listen, the other thing with the perception on this thing is the whole six feet when possible. Those two words, when possible, i- is really frustrating.
Yes.
You know, and, and again, listen, we've heard from parents, we receive dozens, at one time, hundreds of emails a day. I know every single board member reads every single one of those emails, and I know there are six different, I counted, six different ideas that parents have of how either in-person, full-person, hybrid should work, right? And that cruxes at six foot. And I, I'm just having a hard time with the six feet because we want to keep our kids safe, we want to keep our teachers safe, we want to get those teachers vaccinated, we always want to keep those teachers distance from the kids, but this is going to be a never-ending frustration, and I'm just not seeing the data out there that tells me, listen, logic would tell you if you're six feet further apart from somebody, it's going to be safer. Here's the problem I'm having. I'm not seeing data where it says if you're at five feet, it's any safer than six feet, or if you're at four feet, it's any safer than six feet, or if you're at three feet, it's safer than six feet. Now, the masks mean something, obviously, the masks mean something, but, you know, I, I've talked to, I've got a friend on DuPage County Health Department, and they're just not seeing that higher transmission if a district is at three or four feet versus six feet. And listen, I think we're moving in a great direction. I'd like to see us, you know, I mean, we're going to have to get there eventually, and the whole thing about this is eventually, that's the direction it's going to go. The CDC is eventually going to say, well, now we feel, unless they don't make up, you know, something new as far as, you know, a new strain and, and things like that, and not saying that the strain isn't real, I just want to clarify that. But eventually, the CDC is going to say, okay, now we feel it's okay to go to five or to four or to three. So, you know, I, I guess we're going to have to make a decision somewhere there, and, you know, listen, I think this is a great first step. The work you guys have done is tremendous. I'm a little concerned for the, you know, especially for our Niqua kids just looking at this, to be honest, because, you know, if you got close to three thousand kids at Niqua on, on average, you know, if we were pre-COVID, right? And you got forty-seven percent going back in person, so let's just say that's roughly anywhere between thirteen and fifteen hundred kids now that are going to be five day, or four days a week? I wish five days a week, four days a week. My concern there is with those alternatives, alternative spaces, I think this is what Susan was talking about as well, is I would like to, and I know you mentioned this, Brad, is to minimize how often those kids are in those alternative spaces. Because I'd hate for a kid to have to go in on a Wednesday, and again, and again, I know they will look through every single one of these thirteen hundred kids' schedules, but I would hate for a kid to go in on a Wednesday and he's got, you know, three out of his four classes. You know, I, I want to try to minimize the number of days and periods that each student is in one of those alternative spaces if possible, and I'm sure that's the goal as well.
We, we agree. We have no interest in a student spending their entire time in, in the building in an alternative learning space. That defeats the purpose of coming into the building, which is why the building principals are committed to figuring out a mechanism to be able to decrease that to the greatest extent possible.
Okay, all right. And then, and then I just want to touch on like three other bullet points, and I'll stop, Justin, I promise.
Can I just, on the one, I will, you know, you know, a math teacher by trade, so I'll, I'll definitely, I didn't know that John Hopkins' information looked different, so I'll make sure that I look that up.
I literally-
I do try to cross-reference with IDPH, Northwestern, DuPage, to try to predict where I think some of these things might be.
And I-
I was just, as I shared, I'm kind of surprised and frustrated that the case numbers with the positivity rate, when I'm a math person thinking about how they all connect to each other, so I'll make sure that I look at that data as well.
Yeah, and I didn't mean to, I would have told you about this, Doug, but I literally, at, at four o'clock or four-thirty, an article came across my tickers that I have out there about COVID and stuff like that.
And talked about differences.
And there was an article that came out of Springfield that talked about how positivity rate for the state is the lowest since July, which I mentioned, it's at two-point-eight percent. And then they had a link to the John Hopkins stuff, and I clicked on that, and I zoomed into Illinois, and I clicked on DuPage and Will, and I'm like, how come DuPage is, is saying nineteen cases per hundred thousand and Will's saying twenty-two, and yet, the numbers we're seeing from DuPage and, and IDPH are different? So, so just the other thing I want to mention, and please don't mistake this, that this board values and appreciates everyone in this district, and we try our best to represent everybody in this district. You know, there, there are decisions, there are decisions that, you know, to give you an example, if I'm comparing apples to oranges here now, if we're comparing school shootings, for instance, you know, there are many different perceptions about the, the risk of school shootings, let's say. And, but as a board, like it or not, and I know, like I said, apples to oranges, and I think my position is clear on, on how I feel on COVID, but as a board, we have to make sure that we take every precaution possible, no matter what a person's perception is on a school shooting. And, and that's all this board is trying to do. We have been consistent, we have, there's no mass conspiracy theory here, you've never heard any of these board members, you know, align to any group. There's, we are volunteer members who, it serves us no personal interest to keep our kids out of school. As far as the teachers go, you know, we should all be frankly kissing our teachers' butts for everything that they've done this year.
(applause)
And so therefore, it's incredibly hurtful as a board member and who is friends with many of our teachers when we hear in the community that this board is kowtowing to a union. Let me make one thing clear, we are not CPS, okay? You know, I will tell you, we have got two thousand teachers. You want to know how many teachers I've heard from out of two thousand? Twelve. I counted them. I went back and counted them. There were twelve teachers that reached out to me or reached out to the board and said they had concerns over safety. We all have concerns over safety, but to say that the board is making a decision based on the teachers' union is frankly insulting for how amazing of a relationship and how amazing that they have worked through us through all of this and coordinated with us. It's extremely hurtful, especially for all of the work that the teachers have done for our kids. Number three, we have always said we want to be back. It's not going to be what everybody looks, but we're making progress, and we will continue to make progress. The board does value, and I want to make this clear too, and make this perfectly clear, because we are a split community as far as wanting in-person and remote. And it needs to also be said that those choosing remote over in-person, we value just as much and want to make sure that they continue to have a, a good education through all of this. So it needs to be said, and I, I recognize, because I'm one of those parents, I recognize that the in-person, people that want their kids in-person feel like they are not being valued as much. We get that, we understand that, we empathize with that, and that's why we have continuously tried to do this as quickly as possible. Is it as quickly as possible as everybody wants? No, but we are trying. Lastly, regardless of what people believe- Lastly, regardless of what people believe, we are significantly impacted more than other districts and other private schools and other public school districts, whether you like it or not. It's easier to make changes in a one-school Catholic school versus a 33-school public school district. So yes, things like you saw, number of students in the classroom, size of the classroom, physical size of the building, busing, which we have to stagger, our budget, which is much less than majority of the districts that we are being compared to that could go out and hire dozens of teachers and it doesn't affect their budget because they're running such a high fund balance. So regardless of what people thinks, our circumstances and situation does make a difference. But I will tell you, what we have done, and I know it's not as quick as some people want, but what we have done to maintain the quality of education that remote has received and in-person is starting to receive more with the budget we have, I commend administration and Dr. Tally. I'm done. Thanks.
Mr. Akarius, Mr. Hellman, we have more presentation?
Elementary is going to be coming on next.
Okay, let's hear it.
You can go ahead and queue up the elementary slide.
For the benefit of everybody online, we have comments from the gallery talking about asking questions. If you would have a question, please email it to the board or administration and they will get back to you. This is a board meeting and there's a procedure in order to conduct the board meeting. And it is not to entertain questions that are thrown from the gallery. I appreciate the respect that you offer as we.
Listen, my friend, listen, for the people in the audience, if you've got questions, we have tried to respond to every one of the emails that you have sent in. Ask those kind of questions. Continue to ask those questions. The question that I asked in the numbers, I'm sure Dr. Tally and administration will address the next time, okay? But during a public meeting, there's an agenda. And it's not, it's not back and forth, okay? If, if you want to get questions answered, I think this board and I think Dr. Tally will all agree, we have been very good at getting back to you. So please continue to do that, because I'm sure the people online have about a million questions too.
Thank you, Mark. Let's hear the next presentation, please.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Tally. Thank you for having us here this evening. It is our pleasure to share with you our increasing in-person instruction for elementary students plan. I'm Laura Rosenbloom. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. I have three classroom practitioners joining me here tonight to share their perspective and experience thus far. It's my pleasure to introduce Barb Vaughn from McCarty Elementary, Amanda Eishen from White Eagle, and Julie South from Brooks. Now you can visually even see their names. Sorry about that. All right, as you know, student engagement and growth is our goal in all learning environments. Remote instruction will continue. At this time, we have 5,508 students who are participating in remote instruction. Our in-person instruction has begun and we have 4,357 students participating in that. The model that we're sharing with you today is designed to support both groups of learners. We have many students who, for a variety of reasons, need in-person learning. We also have many students who also, for a variety of reasons, need remote learning and instruction. Both needs are important and an integral part of our plan. You've heard before about the four Cs of education. This does continue to be the focus for all of our students, communication, critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration. I mention this because regardless of learning from home or school, we're creating opportunities to cultivate these critical skills for all 9,865 of our students. So what is our plan? Our plan is that all students who are currently attending in-person will continue to attend in-person but four half-days per week. They will attend Tuesday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 11:30 AM. Remote learners will continue to attend from 12:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon. While the times appear to be different, it's because our specials classes are in the afternoon and both our remote and our in-person learners participate in those specials during the afternoon. Some of the things that we considered, one, we felt it was important for students to remain with the same teacher. We believe that strong relationships have been formed between student and teacher, but also student to student. We felt like at this time in the year, that could be very traumatic for some students. Others are super resilient and would have no problem. But we also believe that our teachers know a lot about our students. They have learned many things as they've watched them do math, as they've listened to them read. We want to continue to use that information as we plan instruction for them. They've also developed relationships with families and have made adjustments based on what they know that that family and students need. This will be possible in most cases. There are a few students at Springbrook and Claw where a class change will be necessary and the school will be working with those families on that. A second thing that we thought was very important was keeping the same schedule. This provides consistency not only for students, but really for families and for our teachers. We know that when we made the last switch, it was hard for families. And even the student who, her mom read the note, right, like, oh, I forgot what time to log on. And so we feel like by maintaining this consistency of our schedule, that will make it easier for all students to continue logging on at the right time. This also provides consistency because in our current model where we have two half-days, then they're also joining Zoom on the afternoons where they are not in-person. So for teachers, the groups are also constantly changing. In this scenario, all of the in-person students will be together in the morning and all of the remote students will be together in the afternoon. So really planning and designing their groups based on those consistent students versus it changing depending on A-day or B-day will also be very helpful. Because of these plans, students will each have two and a half hours of live instruction with their teacher and two and a half hours of the asynchronous independent work. We are aware, and as you heard again tonight, that that has been a challenge for our students. Our teachers are continuing to work and you're going to hear some of the key factors that we're doing to really improve and enhance that, because we do know that is one of the concerns from parents, from teachers, and from students. We do believe that this plan provides quality instruction for our in-person learners and our remote learners, because it really provides teachers the opportunity to focus on one group or the other versus rooming and zooming, meaning they would be looking at their in-person five-year-olds in kindergarten and watching the, on the screen Zoom students who are learning remotely from home. I think it really struck me at the last board meeting. First of all, whenever our high school students, not just the presenters that are scheduled to come, but others come and speak, I'm always so impressed, because I have to tell you, in the other districts I've been, we did not have so many high school students come and speak. And the fact that they are so articulate and so passionate, I think says a lot about the education that they are getting here. But even he, as a high schooler, said, right, I'm right here. I'm in the class. Like, look at me, right? And, and he felt the teachers were focusing on the students that were on Zoom. I think students on Zoom would tell you the same thing, the teachers focusing on the kids in class. And those are 18 or 17-year-olds. And we're talking about five-year-olds where we're really working on turn-taking and staying focused and waiting patiently. So that's another reason that we felt like this plan would be most beneficial for our students. So how will we roll this out? We will start with the students currently participating in the hybrid model. They will automatically start the four-half-day model on March 9. If you're a family that is currently in hybrid, you do not need to do anything at all. We do know that there are families with, A, us changing the schedule to four half-days, with the vaccination being more available and an assortment of other reasons, might decide that at this time, they would in fact like to go from remote to in-person. Based on space availability, parents may have the option to switch from remote to hybrid. We will add students where space is available. If needed, we will use a lottery system if we are not able to accommodate all students due to space limitations. Some classrooms, we have many open spaces for in-person learners and we could easily add them to their current classroom teacher. If there were too many, we are still, our goal would be to keep them with the same classroom teacher. If that was not possible, our next opportunity for them would be to be with another teacher at the same grade level in the same school. And then finally, if there was not space available for that, and by space, I mean two things. I mean both physical, right, we're doing our physical or social distancing space, so physical space, the size of the room, the number of students, but also even class size. We do have class size caps. And so just adding a student to that class could also increase us to the level where we wouldn't be able to add additional students. So if our third option would be for a student to have a teacher at another school, if families, remote families, did not want to change teachers or schools, they could certainly decline and stay remote. If they do decide that they would like to participate in it at another school, the family would be responsible for transportation and the change would only be for the remainder of this year. Again, our goal is to make every effort to include as many students as possible in our four-half-day hybrid plan. We do want more students in-person, but we will follow the physical distancing limits and class size limits that we have to adhere to. We have continued to gather feedback in a variety of ways and from a variety of people, students, parents, teachers. They all have shared valuable information with us, and whether that's through emails or through board comment or just through conversations that we've had at Coffee Connects or PTA meetings or in the many conversations they have with their teachers, we have really learned so much. And so really, when we're talking about our plan, we're looking at those greatest areas of concerns that have been raised, looking at how we can monitor and modify, and determining our key supports. So there's three areas that we'd like to address tonight, hence our three teachers, who are going to share with you some of that information. So one of the key areas that we already talked about are greatest concerns is that independent time. So Barb is going to share with you some of the details that we're providing to make independent time better for students.
Oh, sorry. During the full remote, before we became hybrid, students were participating in independent activities throughout their day. So a teacher would teach a lesson and then the students would have some time to do some independent work and then take a break, and then the kids would come back. The teacher would teach another lesson and then there would be an opportunity for some independent time and a break. So that, those independent activities and that independent time was spread out throughout the day. So now with the transition to our current hybrid model, students now have some independent practice time, but it's all grouped together. So either in the morning or the afternoon, depending on if you're participating as an in-person learner in the morning, then you'd have your independent activities in the afternoon. And if you come as a remote learner in the afternoon, you participate in the independent activities in the morning. Teachers across the district, we are trying to support students during this independent time in a variety of ways. While designing these activities, we are taking into consideration not only content area and grade level, but the unique needs of a group of students in our classroom. Teachers, first and foremost, are really working to make these engaging and fun and provide choice and practice for our students. These activities for an elementary classroom teacher span the full range of content area. So we're providing independent activities in reading, writing, math, science, social studies, STEM, and so on. Teachers know their students, so many of them are also embedding some unique opportunities in those independent activities to help enrich their interests and so forth, so things that they're really interested in to kind of enhance that learning. We also are creating tools so that students can actually participate in these activities with independence. So speaking personally, approximately one-third of my first graders actually log in and participate independently on their own in those activities as well as in their remote afternoons, because their parents are working at home or their caregivers are taking care of other siblings and so forth. So we're working really hard and taking into consideration that our students need to be able to navigate those, those activities with independence. Teachers are using a variety of tools to develop independent activities that match the needs of their students. So some are using audio files for those students who need support, reading directions, providing written directions. Some are making videos. Some are creating choice boards. These examples only represent some of the many ways independent work is being developed. It is a challenge for teachers as they are trying to strike a balance with these independent activities. Teachers invest time and effort creating the independent activities weekly. For me, it's my normal Saturday activity to be able to build those slides for my students and links and make them fun and engaging and exciting for kids to see on Mondays. We want to provide, like, fresh and engaging choices, yet still maintain something that's predictable and structured and a routine for students. For some students, that might not be enough, and for some, it may be too, too much. But we're trying to be thoughtful and purposeful and we really care about what the students are doing during that independent time. Teachers are very appreciative of the parent feedback. I wanted to mention that because partnering with the families has been super beneficial for me as we develop these activities for our classroom. In my classroom, the feedback has been varied. So many parents have been very appreciative of the activities and the focus and the practice, and others have stressed, like, some concern about screen time, right? The amount of time their student is spending on the screen. We're thankful for the tremendous level of support from home and we are very aware of the challenges for families and very appreciative of the time and effort it's taking for the grown-ups at home to support their students. Providing independent activities that students find engaging is very time-consuming, but it's worth it because it's an important part of our students' learning day. Our focus for these independent activities is discovery and practice, but we're also weaving that learning throughout our in-person time with students. Whether it's independent journal writing or talking about a kindness activity that they had on their independent activity for Kindness Week, or sharing a journal writing or a piece from their writer's workshop during independent time. Students are sharing their experiences and activities during class and they're encouraging other students to check out that choice. So they're like, oh, I didn't know that was in there. I'm going to check that out. Our kids love to share their learning and it provides the teacher time to highlight their exemplary independent work and also encourage skills and strategies that we want them to transfer from our in-class learning. I wanted to share this with you because I continually remind my students that they are doing something that no other six and seven-year-old student has ever done in their entire lives. And there are some tears sometimes and discouragement, right? So I am just, I'm like, I am always here to help you. Our elementary students are learning things beyond the targeted learning goals that we set for them in these independent activities. So here on the slide is a note that one of my first graders slipped me on his first day of in-person. So here on the slide is a note that one of my first graders slipped me on his first day of in-person learning. So I always post their independent activities on Monday. So he came into the classroom, he slips me this note and I did translate it there for you. It says, "The Lego video isn't working." And it's so interesting because I embedded this video for this particular student because it was like the science of the building Legos and how they're constructed and made. And so, he couldn't access the video on the independent slides and so he advocated for himself. He took the time to write down the note and communicate his needs. And I just want to say like, we are as teachers so proud of the students as they tackle learning in person, remotely, and during their independent learning day time. Thank you.
All right, in addition to independent learning being a focus for our teachers, we have also been exploring rooming and zooming. Some of the ways we've looked at it include morning meeting, end of the day meeting, small group instruction, and scheduling constraints actually necessitated the need for rooming and zooming for math at some of our schools in third through fifth grade. We have learned a lot from this experience. It has helped inform the decisions we've made as part of our plan for four half days per week. As Barb already shared, our teachers have really stepped up with independent learning. They are doing the exact same thing with rooming and zooming. Again, one of the things I so appreciate about 204 is our board members, our superintendent and our community are so supportive of our teachers and rightfully so. They have worked so hard and even being here on a Monday night, I really appreciate it. But they have also given us great feedback, including key supports and ways that we can make rooming and zooming most effective. So we're going to continue or we're going to share with you some of the ways that it is actually very demanding, especially at this age level, but where we've really seen some successes and want to continue to expand on that in a limited basis. So Amanda is going to share with you some information about her experiences.
Teachers continue to seek ways to connect with their students. And in the elementary classroom, that classroom community that we've worked so hard to build is crucial. Mondays are very helpful because everyone is on Zoom together. So everyone, you're still able to continue that community and work together as a class. Another way some teachers are maintaining that connection with the remote and the hybrid students is through rooming and zooming and I use it for morning meetings. Morning meetings are great because I use a separate camera that I place so my zoomers at home can see my kids come in in the morning. And then I use the smartboard and put my zoomers at home on the screen and then they can communicate back and forth. And my kids in the classroom love seeing their friends on the big screen and think that that's amazing. So, and this short period of time allows us to start our day together. We go through the expectations, the school announcements, go through the to-do list and their plans for the day. And I love the opportunity to see everyone first thing in the morning and start them off on the right track and make sure that they know what is expected for them throughout the day. I know others do the same thing at the end of the day as their wrap-up, giving the kids that have been working remotely or independently in the afternoon the opportunity to share what they did during that time and have a fun end-of-the-day dance. I share a book a day and read a picture book at the end of my day every day and the kids look forward to that. So it's just another way to kind of keep some normalcy into it. I also room and zoom with math, I teach a mathematics cell class. And having the students in class allows you to see their understanding and gives the personal connection of being in the room with you. But you still have students on the screen and you need to watch for their understanding. Therefore, you have to make sure you split your time and focus on both groups evenly. Making sure that they're participating in discussions and understanding material. It is more difficult than my morning meeting and it takes a lot more time to teach the content of math by doing the rooming and zooming. And it requires a delicate balance to make sure that every student is learning and that you're meeting their needs. Setting up the expectations and the teaching strategies for what students should do if you're working with somebody else establishes lifelong problem-solving skills and helps to create that caring and supportive atmosphere of all students. The environment is easier for older students who better understand the dynamics of the situation, meaning it's easier for them to wait their turn and remain engaged while the teacher shifts her attention back and forth between the roomers and zoomers. It provides an opportunity to present the material to all students at one time, but it requires the teacher to constantly split their attention between both groups. This is the hardest time of my day because I have such a strong desire to meet the needs of all of my students and make sure that they're all doing the best that they can. To maintain this level of engagement all day would be challenging for the students because it requires a lot of patience on their part. To be successful with rooming and zooming, the district has provided me with a speaker so that my zoomers can hear me as I still walk around the room and the roomers can hear the zoomers answer questions and share their ideas. I also utilize a different, a number of small group and re-teaching opportunities through the breakout rooms and in-class groups. But flexibility and understanding are key components to rooming and zooming. And when you establish the expectations, it can be successful for both the hybrid and the remote learners for a portion of the day.
Thank you Amanda for helping teach us a little bit more about rooming and zooming. Oh.
I think we got stuck on the slides here. Is there anything you want to point out Amanda about the slides? I know you gave a great presentation, but we missed a couple of these here.
With the morning meeting and things, you can focus on those social emotional needs. When I'd use my second steps and go through that. So you're getting and having the kids engage with each other. And they love to share stories and they love the opportunity. Even the kids at home can still work together in a breakout group while the kids in class can still work together. So you're still able to get them all engaged, it's just a different way of doing it.
Thank you Mr. Gerbis, I do appreciate it. I'm going to be on top of it now. All right, next. Interestingly enough, as Amanda just shared, we have definitely wanted to look at any of the areas of concern. So I think kind of our final area of concern has just been the, what people have talked about, that social emotional impact and that balance, how do we have key supports in place for all students? And I attended recently a conference that was exactly about social emotional learning and trauma and the impact on the brain and how we can help students during this time. And so one of the things they shared was the 10 things your brain needs to be healthy. And many of them were things that you would expect, sleep, water, healthy food, exercise. But there was one on there that I had forgotten about. It made perfect sense as I thought about it, but I'd forgotten about it. And it was laughter, that a healthy brain to be able to learn needs laughter. And I think that's something that we're all longing for as this pandemic has gone on and on. But it really also reminded me of Julie's presentation because that is the goal, not just of Julie, but of all of our teachers, to make learning a joyful place to be. So Julie's going to share with you some of the things that have been happening in her classroom.
Thank you. I appreciate the chance to share how in-person learning has been both very effective and beneficial. I'd like to speak to the overarching advantages to additional in-person instruction and I'd also like to talk about the benefits of our model for our remote students. Being in-person with students has increased our ability to connect and know our students even better than we already do through the remote learning. We became teachers to be able to interact with students face-to-face. We miss that, our students are missing it too. If we're able to have four half-days of instruction, this will increase consistency for both students and teachers. I quickly noticed both social and emotional and academic benefits with in-person learning. Our first week back, students saying that they wished everybody was here. How cool it was that they were both wearing unicorn masks. And I noticed someone's unexpected quick mental math that I never had noticed through Zoom. Despite six-foot spaces between us and each other, good teaching and learning is happening in person every day. Collaborative conversations between students happen spontaneously and naturally. Deeper social emotional connections that are building stronger relationships with me and with each other are happening. We have time to be mindful in a learning space that I can control. Opportunities to really see each other's dance moves, laugh and talk while we're working with no glitchy mics. In-person, impromptu kid-created, read-to-each-other sessions spontaneously occur when kids check out the same library book after the LMC director rolls down our hallway. Having these things occur with no tech boundaries is priceless. Academically, I can actually see their writing in progress and notice, wow, that's what your handwriting looks like. Or help them as I circulate whispering, "Hmm, tell me more", to encourage them to add detail to the writing they're creating. I can see them in the flesh and watch them think and question and wonder in a much different way. I can keep their attention using best practices that I've mastered over these years. Teachers are doing so much to make remote Zoom and independent learning experiences work for our students and families. Our district's teachers are excellent and we've learned a lot about remote instruction in a very short time. We're working harder than ever to plan for engaging learning using the best practices we know for all our students in both settings. Having our in-person learners every day, teachers can give undivided consistent attention to them. We can do the same for our remote learners as well. Teaching our afternoon group of remote learners alone increases our ability to focus solely on them and their specific needs and have time to guide their learning in a smaller Zoom setting. They have more of the same opportunities in-person students have, to laugh, talk, share their thinking, ask questions and help each other when there are less of them on the screen. Teachers have more time to guide their learning when it's a smaller Zoom group. It's challenging teaching four different combinations of learners the same skills throughout a week, but we've been making it happen. Planning and teaching two combinations of students is manageable and sustainable for teachers and students alike. Being remote has built our capacity as educators to reach students and successfully impact learning in a virtual environment. We have all grown in good ways, that won't be lost. Adding days for our in-person learners is beneficial for all of our students.
Thank you Julie. All right, just to recap with a couple of the important elements of our four-half-day schedule, it does follow the recent CDC guidance for substantial and high transmission rates, which is elementary students in hybrid learning mode or reduced attendance, which is what we would be doing, and the physical distancing of six feet or more is required, which we would be following in this model. We do believe it provides a higher quality experience for our remote and our in-person learners. The Monday design, as they mentioned, allows all students to engage as a full classroom community. It prevents students from being on their computer, rooming and zooming all day, which is a lot of screen time and requires a long attention span for elementary learners. And I know people have mentioned, well, other districts are doing it. Well, other districts have made some different choices than us. This would prevent us from reshuffling all students to new teachers, that is one way people have accomplished it. Or they've eliminated programs such as reading improvement, interventionist or project arrow so that those teachers have been reassigned to be classroom teachers so that they can reduce those class sizes and meet the guidance. We feel like those programs are very beneficial here in 204 and do not want to part with them. We feel like with this model, we are able to provide a high level of service to both our in-person and our remote students. So our timeline is that tomorrow Dr. Tally's letter would go out. After that, we have a letter from our principals that would notify parents that four half-days per week for in-person students will start on March ninth. We will also, in that same letter, send a Google form for families who wish to request to switch from remote to four half-days. If people do not want to switch, they need to do nothing more. If they do want to switch, they would need to complete the form by February 26th at noon. And then on Tuesday, March ninth is when we would start the four half-days per week. And I couldn't end without doing a couple of student highlights. I know that you can read those, so I will just highlight one of my favorites. But it circles back to the four Cs that I talked about with critical thinking, collaboration, communication and creativity. One of the outcomes of all the different ways we've been teaching since last March is students' technology skills and their willingness to collaborate and think creatively and critically are incredible. I hear students all the time, "Oh, Ms. Vaughn, let me show you how to do that." "Mrs. Rosenbaum, let's just go in a breakout room and I can teach you." Like, they are, and with their classmates, they are willing to help anyone learn any type of technology. And I love how fearless and what risk-takers they are because they'll try anything till they figure out how to do it. And I think that's a great model and lesson for all of us as well. So at this time, what questions do you have for us?
Any questions, open it up, Ms. Piel.
So, in our previous presentation, they talked about what if a student is in the two-day week, but then they only, they want to stay two-day a week. How are we going to handle that and how's that going to affect our planning for the elementary?
Sure, so our number one goal is to have as many students in person as we possibly can and for as much time as we can. So we would want them to have a conversation with the school first because if there were any way to make it possible for them to do the four days, that would be our preference and partially because as we talked about, that consistency of schedules with the kid not having to go back and forth between groups would be a more beneficial experience. But if they weren't able to do that, we really want them to be able to come and to be in person. So we would work to accommodate that.
I see, okay.
Can you help me understand just a little bit better? The students that are remote, are they, so what would their, what would their morning look like versus their afternoon? Can you just help me with that again?
Currently, those remote students that we get to see in the afternoon, they have independent, those independent activities that we're designing for them. They, they get a chance to work on those activities and engage in those activities in the morning. And then we log on with those students at 12:30 in the afternoon. So that, that schedule would continue for them as we go to the four-day model.
So, what, what, what happens with the specials for, what? How are the specials working for a remote and for students that are coming in?
Sure, so currently we have our specials scheduled in the afternoon and they are doing the zooming for that because at this point, everybody is remote in the afternoon and that will still continue even in our model. So we are able to maintain that same schedule and kids won't have to learn a new schedule. There's a few instances, but very few where we have to make some tweaks. But for the most part, whatever time they've been logging on for PE, that will still be the time they're logging on for PE. So that won't be a change for them. But you're right, that's why the afternoon is a half-hour longer because that's where we fit in the specials.
So, so those after, so the afternoons, the remote students then, that when they are with their teachers in the afternoon, they are not losing any type of core time?
Right.
Okay, because that, that extra half an hour, that's when everybody will go through the special, whatever the special is that day?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I needed, thank you, thank you very much for that. And can you just, I know we talked about and I, and I understand. Can you share again sort of, a lot of it's that slide 11? Because there may be, I could envision there may be parents who have students who are at the elementary, middle and high and you know, we've talked about doing the rooming and zooming at the upper levels. Can you just share a little bit again why that is a little bit more problematic for our elementary students and classrooms?
Absolutely. For the rooming and zooming, because of the need-
Can you come a little closer to the-
Sure. Because of the need of the teacher to split their time and give equal amount of attention to both groups of students. I don't want to lose either one of them. That balance, it is difficult to do and it requires a lot of patience on the, both the teacher and the student side. Where if I'm answering a question for one of my kids in class, those on the computer have to wait. So they've learned, you know, to hit the little hand mark and they know that I will get them. They know that I will help them, just like if I'm helping the kids on the computer, my kids in class may ask each other. And that, so they've learned different skills and things, but trying to do that all day long, it is, it's hard.
For some kids, can I just say too, for some kids who are in the remote setting only, it's hard for them to sit in their chair and maintain their attention when I have my eyes on the screen the whole time. So it's concerning and a bigger challenge to add the fact that I will not be sitting at the screen to keep them in their at-home chair.
So to benefit the kids that are in- So to benefit the kids that are in the classroom, I do walk around when I'm teaching and have things projected. And I've shared my screen so everybody can see the same thing. And that's why I have the speaker, because they can hear me in the back corner of my room. The kids on the computer can hear me, and then the kids in the classroom can also hear the answers from the kids on the computer. So there's a lot of collaboration, but it takes a lot of patience and a lot of just-
Maintaining attention.
Yes.
Which is why, really, right, we're looking at more for that limited amounts of time versus like the whole day expended amount of time.
Thank you.
Ms. Donahue?
So Susan and I had the opportunity of visiting one of the elementary schools this week for about an hour and a half, I guess, last week. And I think it was one of the schools that had the worst crowding, not crowding, but highest percentage of in-person students. And if I recall correctly, I think they had 11 classes that couldn't fit in their current space. So they were looking all over the building for bigger spaces to put these students in when they were all in-person together. So are we, we don't have any situations where we're going to have, like, alternative space, like the high school, or where like a fifth grader has to sit in the hallway, or anything like that?
No, we won't be utilizing hallway space, but you're right. We are utilizing almost any other space that is large enough and that we can convert, so to speak, into a classroom. So it might be our MPRs or our LMC, like those spaces that have more space, but maybe aren't as conducive. But we're working to provide dividers and partitions and things that will make it more like that classroom feel. But you're right, it really, when we talk about the four Cs and creativity, we had to really think in some very creative ways to make it possible. And I'll tell you, one of the other models we looked at was, well, what if we had an AM group and a PM group? And we do actually have to do that at one school for one class, because they had the highest number of students in the entire district select in-person. And really, again, the feedback that we've had was we want to make sure that both our in-person and our remote students are getting that quality experience. So we really want to make sure that we're tending to both groups of students. So yes, utilizing space was really the way that we found to be most creative and to be able to bring in the most in-person learners with that consistent schedule.
Well, thank you, because it was a great experience for us to see firsthand how much creativity it does take to figure out how to make this work in some of these schools with the high in-person attendance. So thank you very much for everyone.
Thank you.
The architectural logistics, internal architectural logistics is amazing and extremely, it's a lot, so thank you.
It's a huge credit to our custodians and our principals and our teachers. I mean, they really have collaborated to come up with the best solutions, given the numbers and the size of the room and everything else. Like, they have really worked collaboratively and creatively, you're right, to come up with solutions. And our custodians have done a lot of heavy lifting for us, so we are grateful.
Mrs. Grover?
I just wanted to say thank you to the teachers and thinking of both remote and hybrid students. Just a quick thing, you had mentioned Feb. 26, which is a Friday. And I know high school and middle school had said March 1 as their deadline. I just wanted to make sure that it's a consistent, and are you Feb. 26? And are they just kind of wondering about that?
Because we're starting earlier than they are, we're hoping to start by March 9. So I know it sounds silly, but even that weekend, like, principals having those numbers on Friday means they're already working through it and figuring out what we need to do and how many instances where we might need a lottery, how many instances where we might need to change schools. So we felt by getting a little head start on that, like, we could then meet our March 9 deadline. It still might be a little bit later for a family that's changing schools, but our goal is really to get everybody that we possibly can, starting on that 9.
Okay, which is fine. I just wanted to clarify it for parents who have kids in elementary, middle, and high school, so thank you.
Mr. Rising?
Again, thank you to the teachers and Ms. Rosenbaum, you know, thanks to your principals and their leadership teams, too, because I know a lot of work went into this. And the fact that elementary's only been back for four weeks, and we are already ready to extend this, it's a credit to 22 elementary schools. I mean, come on, you know, and granted, I know you've been laboring over this, I'm sure, Laura, for many, many, many weeks, even before the elementary kids were back, of how do we make this work? But until we can truly get the logistics and see those kids in the school of how this looks and how this works, and I just want to compliment the teachers, because to me, this is one of the, listen, we all want kids back in four days. I get that, but putting that to the side, this is such a wonderful plan, and it's really focusing on the students. You know, so my first question is on the, what was that slide you said, the options there? Slide 6. So do we have, again, based on the numbers we know, sorry, based on the numbers we know today at our elementaries, do we have to make any parents currently pick that third option? Or is it only if remote wants to come back into this new four-day-a-week program?
Correct. It is only if a currently remote student would like to go in-person that we would need to use the lottery system.
Okay.
Everyone else, we are, like, we designed our plan based on being able to accommodate all of the families that are currently in-person learning right now.
Really worried about just the third option the most, you know, because-
Me, too.
Listen, you know, I mean, the first two, while aren't ideal, at least they're, if, you know, I'm a parent with an elementary kid, okay, if I want my kid in, you know, they're still in the same school, right? They're still going to see a lot of their same friends. But to move, you know, that's quite a change. Okay, so that was my first question. Thanks.
And you know what, Mark? You're right. That would be our last resort, and if the family was not interested. But if we really want all kids back as much as possible, you're right. We kind of stretched ourselves to think outside the box, and what would be one more way we could do that?
And you and I have had a lot of conversations, actually. And again, I love this plan, even though I don't have an elementary kid. But I also just wanted to clarify something, too, on the instructional time that Ms. Vaughn touched on, really, is that independent learning or that asynchronous learning, right? We've heard, I've got some emails and heard comments that, oh, the kids are just doing too much asynchronous learning. Okay, but I think it needs to be clarified, because if they're remote only, in the morning, they have their specials, and they have their asynchronous learning, and the afternoon, they get their teacher. The in-person kids get their teacher in the morning, then they have their specials, and they're asynchronous, they're learning in the afternoon. I'm assuming here, and I'm asking you, Laura, to look at the whole district as a whole, my guess here is the majority of our amazing elementary school teachers are trying to minimize that asynchronous learning as much as possible, or at least try to have some interaction. Because here's what my fear is. We know our kids that do really well in elementary. They will take on some of that asynchronous stuff, and they'll do great with it, and they'll do wonderful. Those kids that are struggling or aren't engaged, those are the ones that, you know, I'm sure you guys are kind of all keeping an eye on and trying to, because the studies I've seen, too, in the learning loss that we will see, let's be honest. Let's call it what it is, the learning loss that we will see in our kids. You know, if we can try to minimize that with some of those struggling students, you know, that is better for them. So I'm assuming the teachers and the principals and the leadership team are all talking about this, right?
Yes. So two ways that we're really addressing that. One is really just through our MTSS process, right? And looking at our students who are struggling, and putting reading improvement or interventionist or whatever support that they need in place. And some of that does come for those students during the asynchronous time. But then the other piece was what Amanda was talking about, where some of them are adding in that, oh, we'll all get together at the end of the day, or we'll all start our day together at the beginning. So they are exploring that and seeing the benefits for kids and where it really works and where it doesn't. But you're right, that is another way that we're increasing it. And now, as I'm thinking about it, two other things. We have some district initiatives, some STEAM activities that are being offered to kids every week. And then we've had these fabulous authors, Dr. Horton, and I don't know if you've heard about her, but she is a NASA scientist with, I don't even know how many degrees in a PhD, but she was fabulous. But so we're also bringing in other things that kids can participate in during that asynchronous time also.
Okay, thanks.
I reflect just briefly on some historical perspective. When you were talking about teaching kids in stairwells, I spent some time learning in a stairwell at Wheatland Elementary School. And it was because of our growth, because of the space constraints that we had at that time. And I'm sure it was because I was taking some, like, gifted reading, and it wasn't for disciplinary reasons. But the, but it's interesting that we are, we're dealing with the same issue, just in a different way. So it's not the growth, it's still the spacing that's causing it. So I just find that interesting from our perspective, so thank you.
And I'm glad you said that, because actually, one of the groups of students that I interviewed, I just happened to run into in the hallway. They weren't in the stairwell. But it was four of them, and they were having this great book discussion, and so engaged and invested. So you're right, there are going to be times where we're using lots of other spaces, but not, as you were asking before, like, a per-minute space.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Moving on to the action item. It's not a discussion item, it's an action item there. I need a motion on this action item. Anyone? That the board approve the treasurer's bond modification as presented?
Second.
Okay. Jeannie, can you call the roll? That would be me.
Mr. Krubus?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Okay, we got enough.
Yeah.
That's understandable. Motion passes. Moving on to the next discussion item. Career exploration pathways update.
Good evening, Board of Education. Tonight, I am here to speak about career pathways and some updates. I'll give the second, second for the presentation to pop up. All right, thank you for giving me the opportunity, as well as Dr. Tally, to share this update. And as we go through tonight, I just also want to say a huge thank you to Mr. Akarius and our entire CNI team. This is a collaborative effort in a lot of different ways, as I go through tonight's presentation and talk about some of the different components, as all members of our team play a role into this work, as we share about the great things that we're doing for students. So what are we going to talk about tonight? A couple of things that we've talked about before, one of them being World of Work, so we're going to start with there. And then we're going to end with an update on our computational thinking work with Digital Promise. In the middle, we're going to talk about some opportunities that we're starting to explore and starting to get to work on in terms of our PACE framework and endorsements at the high school level, and some opportunities that are available to us to explore as we connect these pathways and personalize learning pathways for our students. So the first one is to give you a little bit of an overview, an update on what we've been doing with World of Work. For the past two years, we've had an opportunity to share about the World of Work framework. And something that I will kind of share with you tonight is that we are continuing this work and trying to support our students. If you look at the bottom component of what World of Work is, the first component is the self-awareness, where we really allow our students to explore their strengths, interests, and values. If you recall, last year, we talked in that interest component about the realistic investigative artistic social, artistic investigative, I'm sorry, and entrepreneur, and conventional, and what that looks like for a student, and allowing them to explore those interests and allow them to gain some self-awareness. The second part is really allowing them to explore that academic journey across their K-12 experience, and then allowing them to tell their story as we connect that work at the high school level, at that PACE framework. Within that World of Work framework, students have the opportunity, in the career exposure, to explore the careers that we've identified in collaboration with Alcohone Valley. The second part is to really allow them to explore it and kind of practice with it. So there are simulations, activities that connect to that career that they are specifically talking about in that grade level. And then the third component of it is to meet a pro. And that's really a powerful experience for our students at the K-5 level and all of our K-12 dynamic, to be able to interact with the professional in the field of study, not only to see what it's like, but to be able to ask questions and kind of gain some more exposure to what that career possibility is, and to give our students hope about what are the career opportunities available to them as they go through our K-12 experience and eventually decide on potential careers that they will continue on after high school. As we've talked a little bit about, as we initially shared this work, about how World of Work has a strong connection to our FCL competencies, especially within the self-awareness and the social awareness component. If you recall from one of my first slides, we did, showed that connection of where a student is able to self-identify their strengths, interests, and values. And within a community of learners, they also start to build some social awareness that their individual classmates have different strengths, interests, and values that they have, and really build some strong relationships within the specific class. Some of the things that we've done over the past year to support our teachers in this World of Work as we've gone through it is, last summer, we continued our professional learning series to expose more teachers to the why behind it. We think it's really, really important to expose teachers to the why and the importance of it and the story that we're telling through that. The second part is the RIASEC party resources. Our teachers have done an amazing job leveraging the RIASEC to build a community of learners in their classroom and really help them identify their interests and build some strong connections to it. The other nice thing that our teachers have really done a great job with is not only exploration, but they've started to make some connections, curricular connections, and having RIASEC parties around math, around ELA, around grade levels, to really build some understanding and connect the dots between two different concepts. The other thing that we've done is not only develop pacing guides so a new teacher can kind of see how this might flow within their scope and sequence of the year, but also started to help them make some, or identify some points where it naturally connects within the curriculum, where there are some careers that identify with specific points in our curriculum that might be natural fits for their classroom and their school, or within specific times of year that where a career might fit naturally. And then we've also developed some remote learning ideas and how they can expose students. And then the last component is to identify some books. There are some amazing books that are available in our LMCs that are connected to careers and also give students the opportunity to talk about strengths and interests that kind of represent them. And then also some of our other resources that are in our buildings and our short reads and our social-emotional learning activities and work. The other thing that I want to highlight is that our district and our teachers continue to be leading innovators in this area. We had an opportunity to, Ms. Nordstrom and Ms. Gianni from Gombert and Calashah had a chance to present at a San Diego conference that was available nationally, and continued to share the work that they're doing and how this connects to the early grades and some of the great things that they're doing in their classroom. And I will say with 100% certainty that it was well-received and that they continue to lead this work and share the great work that they're doing with others across the country. The next part that I'm going to talk about tonight is, this is going to be a little bit more some work done at the high school and a little bit at the middle school level, but you'll see how it connects to our World of Work initiative and activities as we go through this presentation. We are just starting a lot of this work and the exploration of and starting- We are just starting a lot of this work and the exploration of and starting to get some of the steps that we're going to take to help with the PACE framework and endorsements at that high school level. These two concepts came out of the Power Act. I put up here on a graphic to show you what the four things were that came out of the Power Act, one of them being transitional math that we have worked with in our district and kind of started to implement. The other two is PACE, college and career pathway endorsements, and the fourth one is competency-based education or learning systems. So what is PACE? It stands for post-secondary and career expectations. The core of it is it helps a student really have an individualized learning plan to help them make decisions about career and colleges and help them make, be informed and so that they can go through that learning sequence with having the opportunity to not only explore, but learn about it and continue to learn throughout that process and have really good conversations at home. The PACE framework does two things. It shows what a student should be supported to do and should know. I really like how the state kind of modeled that supported to do because as an educational system, there's some handful of things that we're going to support students throughout their educational journey through those steps. We're not leaving it to an individual student or individual family to accomplish on their own, but we're going to support them in that work. And I'll tell you, our counselors are going to be leaders in this area and already doing a lot of work to support our students. And this will help connect some of the dots that they're doing to some other activities across the district. What it also does, it does three areas. Career exploration and development, which you can see directly connects to some of the things that we're doing at our K-5 World of Work initiatives. Financial aid and literacy, this is specifically some things like FAFSA. And then the last one is starting to look at post-secondary preparation. What does it look like for military, college, two-year university, anything else that would look like that? So giving students not only exposure to the career side of it, but also how to prepare for the training component of it. The PACE framework looks at two things. It starts in middle school, at that eighth grade, as we start to transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. And the other part of it is it starts to look at how all the dots connect as we start from eighth grade and go all the way through high school and then also into that post-secondary component. And it connects to really helping students have the authentic learning and allowing them to identify who they are, their strengths, their interests, and where they want to go. So where are we going next with the PACE framework? What we're going to do is ISBE has developed a model, an example for districts to look at to model what they can do in their district. So what we're, what we're going to do is take a look at the ISBE one as well as some other districts who have developed their own PACE frameworks and look at what does this look like and could look like in 204. As I mentioned before, this is really leveraging some of the things that are already happening and some of the great things that our counselors and buildings are already doing to support students. But we're also going to start to connect the dots, some of the other resources that are available in our school district. For example, our school links that our high school districts have access to and helping them leverage some of the resources that are available to them. Here's an example of what the PACE framework looks like. This is the model that was provided by the state. You can see, if it was a color copy in front of you, you will see a couple of things. Down at the bottom, you will see the career exploration and development in yellow and you'll see the little dots that a student should be supported to do. And then at the bottom, within that specific one, what students should know about that specific thing. As you can see in those three different areas, there are different things that a student should be supported to do and know throughout that sequence. And at the top, by the end of ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade. And again, this is just a model that the state has provided for us to then utilize for our district to drive really good and meaningful conversations with our buildings, our counselors, and our teachers and how we can support students as they prepare for post-secondary and career. The second part that I'm going to talk a little bit about is the exploration of high school endorsements. This is a voluntary system for districts to award students on their transcript. An endorsement does two things. It really demonstrates a student's readiness for college and career and it also then identifies that they have not only completed a sequence of instruction, but also engaged in some professional learning related to that career. So we think that's really two important components. Not only have they gone through the instructional sequence, but also really started to dive into some of the career explorations that we want students to do. Because I can speak to this personally, I think it's really important for them not only to know what they want to do, but also experience it so they can make really informed decisions about their next steps. This is what it looks like in terms of how a student earns an endorsement at the end of their high school career. The first step is that individualized learning plan that directly connects the PACE framework that we talked about earlier and allowing a student to really build out that plan for them and how they're going to kind of prepare for that post-secondary career or post-secondary training. The second component of it is the instructional sequence. In order to earn the endorsement, two years of coursework has to be completed. Within that two years of coursework, six hours must be dual credit or AP credit. Some form of college credit has to be earned worth six hours. So that could look a lot of different ways depending on the endorsement or the pathway. But the important thing is that there is a specific sequence that students have the opportunity to go through. That sequence will have choice built in for students so they have an opportunity to choose many different courses to earn that endorsement, but some of the required courses will allow them to earn that six hours of credit. The second component, or the third component, is the professional learning that's embedded, career exploration activities, and 60 hours of career development. So this could look like internships in our internship class at the high school level. It could look, it could be summer work or it could be a lot of different, other different things that they're doing to earn that 60 hours of internship, career exploration, development, hands-on learning. And then the last piece is a two-team-based challenges. A team-based challenge falls, can, you can define it in a lot of ways, but I'll give you an example. If you recall, a handful of years ago, we worked with the city of Naperville to do that Real World Learning Project with our marketing classes. That is an example of a team-based challenge because it allowed an opportunity for our students to engage with professionals and get feedback from them. That is the key component, that they're interacting with professionals and getting feedback on their process and their work throughout that. And then the final component to earn the endorsement within a specific pathway is completing the reading and math and showing the readiness. This is what it looks like in a little bit of a different format, so I won't take too long. But you can see the individualized plan at the top, then the professional learning components, and then the career-focused instructional sequence. Those four components then allow a student to earn the endorsement at the end of their high school experience. So why are we talking about endorsements? What's the purpose of it? So I'm going to talk a little bit about some research from the World Economic Forum. And then I'm going to talk a little bit about what are some outcomes that students will be able to benefit from in one specific endorsement. So the World Economic Forum has talked a lot over the past couple of years just about upskilling and reskilling and the constant evolution of work and what that looks like and that our students are going to have to continue to relearn. And endorsements is just one way that they're starting that process and of understanding the process of credentials and endorsements and what that looks like. That there is studies showing that this is becoming more and more common as we progress in our, as the years continue to go on and as we prepare our students for an unknown future and the jobs that may or may not exist in the next 15, 20, or 30 years. We know that that relearning is going to have to happen. These are the seven different endorsements that are available for students in the state of Illinois. How this looks, if you have some background knowledge on the career clusters, which are 16, which are nationally recognized as 16 career clusters, the state of Illinois has combined some of them to, for these endorsements. So you'll see a couple of them underneath the major headings where you'll see some of those career clusters combined for one endorsement. Underneath an endorsement though, a school district can have a number of different pathways to earn that endorsement. So that's how it varies a little bit from the 16 career clusters that you may have seen in the past, the endorsements, there are fewer of them, but multiple pathways to earn those. So where are we going to start this work? We are going to start with the human and public services endorsement and specifically the teaching and training pathway. There's a couple of reasons why we're going to start here. The first is we are fortunate enough to have a couple of grant opportunities that are available to us to support this work. Two of them are from the College of DuPage, who has been a great partner in this work and has really reached out to us in willingness to partner as we talk about these pathways and endorsements. The first grant is specifically helping us build this endorsement for teaching and training, really providing us some resources to bring counselors, building leaders, and teachers to the table to talk about all the things that we need to get in place to allow students the opportunity to earn this endorsement. The second one is not a heavy lift on the school district, but where College of DuPage is doing some more work on their end, specifically looking at technology and engineering, teachers, and preparing them and gaining, or giving more students the opportunity to learn about that career opportunity. We're talking, we've talked a lot about a teacher shortage and CTE is, also has that teacher shortage as well, specifically in technology and engineering. So what College of DuPage has been doing, they have been partnering with ISU to help build a stronger pipeline directly from our high schools all the way to ISU to earn that teaching credential. In addition, what they've done, they are starting to offer a professional learning series, not only for our educators, but also students who are in the pipeline, but also students who might be interested in exploring that career opportunity. So they are continuing that work. And then the second one is a CTE education pathway grant that I'll talk about here in a little bit. So how will our students benefit from it? As we talk a little bit more about additional opportunities, we'll see how that kind of unfolds as we start to talk about them outside of the teaching and learning pathway. But for this specific one, there's two opportunities that are available for students who earn this endorsement on their transcript. The first one through NIU, students who are admitted and attend the NIU education are automatically advanced to the finalist round for select scholarships and they are invited to participate in the Innovative Educate and Engage Program at NIU. So if students complete this endorsement, they have a direct, a leg up at NIU and are able to engage in that program that they have available. The second one is the Golden Apple, where students can automatically advance to the final stage of the application process, which ultimately moves them into the top 20% of the applicant pool. So that is two, two nice features for students who earn the endorsement on their transcript as they complete that and have that on their transcript that'll be available to them as they graduate our high schools. The second component that I talked about, some of the resources that were available to support us in this work is a ISBE grant related to CTE education pathway. It is a four-year grant that we are tenatively approved. And what this does is it allows us to support our middle school, high school, and college students in this pathway. So not only are we trying to build some experience for our high school students, but allows us to break down some barriers so that we can expose more students in some summer learning opportunities. We can expose students at the middle school level and really get them engaged in the teaching profession and allow them to have a positive experience. In addition, we can help support them along that pathway. So when they leave 204, we can continue to support them and continue to have a direct connection with our district, which is really important to us so that we continue to support them on that pathway so that ultimately we can bring them back. This grant is also really important to us because this is a collaborative work with the HR department in our Grow Your Own work, which is really important to us. So not only are we talking about our endorsements, we're also talking to HR. So now it is a district effort that we're all working together and really the same goal. So we think that's a really important component of this. So our next step after that, we're going to continue to look at our offerings. What are some other opportunities that are available to us after we get our system in place and what this looks like? And we're also going to talk about the, the impact on our system because we know there are some housekeeping items that are going to have to be tracked with this in terms of the 60 hours, the team-based challenges, and some other components. So we're going to look at what does that look like on our side to make sure that we're supporting students along that path. So that's why we really want to start with one, do it really well, and then continue to advance and look for other additional opportunities. We've identified some tentative other endorsements that we think will fit, that align, that already have college credit available to us, and we'll continue to look at that. But it will also open the door for some really good conversations about where there's some gaps that we need to look at and continue to look and what does that look like for in the future. And then some other nice updates in regards to career exploration that I just want to highlight, last year, the Board of Education, thank you again for approving the career certifications course. We are in our first year of that. So at the end of this first year, we will have some students who are leaving with credentials from that course based on their individualized pathway that they have chosen. And we will continue to look at certification opportunities that are available in our courses for students to earn. The last part that I'm going to talk about tonight that I'm not going to spend a lot of time on is just some of the work that we've done with Digital Promise and computational thinking. This is the year three of this grant that we are fortunate to work on, not only with Digital Promise, but with Iowa City and County of Talladega Schools. Throughout this work, we have learned a lot about the importance of computational thinking, how it aligns to our portrait of a graduate competencies, and how more and more industry are talking about this, especially as we start to see more industries talking about STEM and the competencies that are related to all careers that students will continue to work through. So through this work, not only have we started to talk about at the district level, we've provided professional learning for our teachers and started to help make some curricular connections in their classrooms. We are working with a pilot group of elementary school teachers to provide some model lessons on what this looks like and show that it's not an additional work, but how to highlight that in their current work. So those are just the highlights that we kind of talked about and the competencies that align directly to our portrait of a graduate and being able to pull those out in our classrooms. So when decomposition is happening in our math class, our teachers can highlight that. When we're talking about pattern recognition or providing models in our science classroom, teachers can highlight that and pull that and really highlight that vocabulary for our students and make some real-world connections that they'll see, that students may see down the road. So we'll continue to work through this, we'll continue to talk with industry and make some, and help teachers make curricular connections and being able to highlight these competencies in their classroom with students. So thank you again to Dr. Tally and the Board of Education and a huge thank you to our CNI department and team led by Mr. Akarius for this collaborative work. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Great job, Brian. Start with questions from over there.
Thank you. This is so exciting. So slide 20. Looking at this, I know for high school, when you want to do the PLTW, you kind of have to know in 9, 10 grade you want to do that. Is that the same with the endorsement? Should you know when would a student think that this is the path I want to take?
So it kind of depends on, so that's where that PACE framework really helps in helping with the four-year plans and giving that exposure to students in eighth grade as they start to make those high school course recommendations. We know that some students will engage in these endorsements, but we know that not all students will as well because to complete the two years of coursework at minimum, you'll have to start at the junior year. And we know that sometimes students may not find their passion or their interest until senior and that's okay. But we will give them a pathway to earn that, starting at the ninth grade level, to start to explore and kind of work through that. And then if a student has the opportunity to maybe, you know, I'm kind of interested in a couple. There will also be those opportunities to start that pathway early in their high school career so that they eventually can earn those endorsements by the end of their high school career. That is some of our work to kind of outline that path and how students will get there. You will also see some of our courses that are cross-disciplinary that will hit multiple pathways and endorsements will help with that work as well.
So is this different from the certification, like we were talking about the Microsoft certification? It's a different pathway?
It's different because the certification is kind of a snapshot that a student has demonstrated those skills. The endorsement not only looks at the skills that you are understanding, it also asks the student to engage in the professional learning and the instructional sequence of courses. So that would be the additional components that the endorsement provides, where the certification really just identifies that sequence of instruction that they've learned and demonstrated that they have the ability to demonstrate that learning.
And we partner right now with COD, with the Technology Center for different, different, like I know we used to do cosmetology, for instance. Is this part of the same type of program? Is it different from that program?
TCD is a little bit different. TCD is Technology Center of DuPage, where our juniors and seniors have an opportunity to go and are, or go take a number of different courses and opportunities where they can leave with either dual credit and then some example of certification. Some of the courses may align to some of this endorsement work, some of it may not. What a student can do though, depending on how we work through this endorsement, some of the courses at TCD would directly align and be specific courses that would help meet that endorsement because a lot of them do offer dual credit opportunities.
And one last thing, I was happy to see financial advisory as part of learning in eighth grade. Would this be during advisory sessions, the eighth graders would start doing this, or?
That's where, that's where some of that grant will help us build some, bring some teams together to talk about what does this look like in terms of our sequence and progression. teams together to talk about what does this look like in terms of our sequence and progression and where is a, where is it appropriate for 204 to start to engage in these conversations? ISPE developed that as a model for, for districts to engage in conversations, but know, knew that it wasn't going to be the model that all districts were going to utilize just because of different resources. So I think that's really where our, our buildings, our teachers will have a really good collaborative conversations on when it's most important and valuable for our staff, because we also know that at the high school level, our counselors are amazing and as well as the middle school, our counselors are amazing as well. Where does that fit in their instructional sequence as well and where's a good fit to it?
I think this is great. I know parents are always looking for different opportunities and different career and exploring, so this is great that we're able to expand and offer so much. I think now it's just parents, it's just communicating it to the parents and students what we do have to offer.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mark?
Kind of just similar to what Natasha said. First of all, this is awesome, amazing, incredible. You know, my only concern ever with this is that, you know, if you don't raise your hand early enough, you're going to get locked out, or if we're not educating the kids enough on this, they won't know in time. And the example I always like to give is, you know, on a whim, you know, my daughter's friend, my oldest daughter, who's now in college, you know, at the end of freshman year, her friend said, oh, I'm going to try out intro to engineering, you know, the project lead the way. And my daughter's like, oh man, maybe I'll try it too. Four years later, she's an engineering major in college. And it was just because of her friend just suggested it and she followed her friend to try it out. And so that's always my concern with these things is that they're wonderful programs and amazing opportunities for our kids, but I always worry about if they're going to get in too late or not qualify or too many people step up and then there's not enough opportunities. And I recognize that there are prerequisites or certain things with these grants or, or, you know, that, you know, we have to, you know, make some of those decisions early on, but that's always my concern and hopefully enough kids will get the opportunity.
Yeah, I, I would agree with it. It's always hard, especially because we want students to explore and not be penalized for exploring because we want them to explore before they get into that next step of their educational experience because some, it might get a little more expensive as they start to go through that a little bit. That is also why it's really important to us, we feel, for that world of work, to give students a wide exposure early and allow them just to start talking. What do I like to do? What am I good at? And how does that fit? And then continue that in middle school and then high school. We know that students will, may bounce around between different endorsement opportunities, and that's okay. We're okay with that, but we are, we are giving students an opportunity to earn some of those endorsements who do have that, this is what I, where I want to go, I kind of see that path, I'm really interested in it, and it has some strengths related to it. So we'd like to give those students that opportunity if possible.
Perfect. Thanks. Ms. Thomas?
I liked on slide 22, the focus on teaching because that's a funnel that we want to fill with more people. So I was like in love with that tie-in there. The other thing is I'm a big believer in these kind of programs. I mean statistically, 80% of college students change their major. So the more exposure we can give students early to different thoughts, different careers, different ideas is really important and saves money later on. So thank you, keep up the work with this.
Yeah, we were very excited as these started to roll out. I'll be honest with you, these are within the past month, two months, these announcements. So we were really excited as the, these announcements were made. I think it's just the initial step in this work. I would imagine that additional colleges will continue to offer additional opportunities for students who earn specifically the teaching endorsement. We will see how industry kind of evolves with the endorsements, but we're really excited that our work, our educators, we're stepping up to the plate and offering these opportunities because we know that there is a teacher shortage, but we are all working together on this, which we are really excited about.
Ms. Demme?
Thank you. I'm very excited about this. One of the areas that I have really been very interested in this year, we had been previously talking with COD about trying to enhance the number of dual credit opportunities that we have. This really gives me a lot of hope. I know it's not exactly the same link, but I'm hoping, or we beginning to have additional discussions. I've mentioned before that, you know, I'm, I'm over at Elgin, I work at Elgin Community College, and I see students who are graduating with, you know, their associates as they finish high school, and those opportunities are fantastic, especially for students who may stay in, within our state to go to school and those linkages between some of the, you know, community colleges and U of I for whether it's engineering, whatever. There's just wonderful linkages. And so are we beginning to have additional conversations? Is there hope for those increased opportunities for dual credit as well?
Yes, we are continually talking to COD about opportunities that are available to us and how that connects to the next step of a four-year pathway and degree as well. I know Dr. Tally and I have talked about it specifically about some opportunities and how do we break down some barriers that we have building additional. So we are continuing to talk with COD about opportunities and what that looks like. We are, we will continue to look at opportunities that are available for our district and our students.
I'll just add, I had a conversation with the president of the College of DuPage that begins the process, more to come.
Okay. And then, you know, as far as, I love the endorsements and certifications, can you help under, explain maybe where, what, what does that mean from on your, you know, on your diploma or when you're on your transcript as a college is looking at, you know, your transcript? Is this something that is beginning to be seen nationwide? Is there a recognition of a certification on your transcript from other, with other schools?
A little bit nationally, we are continuing to see more about the college and career conversation. Not only does it happen in Illinois, it's happened nationally. You're seeing more conferences, you're seeing more presentations about this idea. What will, how will this all kind of land? To be determined a little bit. We also know that this is something that is going to take a little bit of time to not only build, but then also give students the opportunity to start to work through those. So we know that it's not something that, all right, we're all, we're ready on the district end, that we can kind of throw this in the course guide and that students are going to earn that endorsement right away. So when, there's going to be a couple of years to really kind of really build this out. At the end of year one, we might have a couple of students who have gone through not only the instructional sequence, but then also the professional learning, the team-based challenge and all those things, but we hope to continue to build it. What we hope is that it continues to gain traction as we talk to our business partners and talk about this and how this, how this sequence of learning and engagement and career development is purposeful and helpful. Because what we hear from our industry partners a lot is just the soft skills and preparing them for this. So hopefully this is something that they will recognize as something on their resume or a kind of something that a student has earned based on not only their experience, their learning, their feedback, and working through this process. So we're hoping that it'll be meaningful and purposeful for our students and beneficial to our industry partners.
And my, my last thing is just to comment, kind of alluding to what you just talked about, because my question had been on the, I didn't know about the school, secondary education level, but just from a career pathway standpoint, that has become such a national focus and having done some work on the workforce development side relating to career pathways for our students who will move into maybe, you know, one or two years of a community college or potentially some training as they get ready to go right into a profession, those career pathways are extremely important. So very valuable to especially a population of our students who are looking to succeed but aren't necessarily looking to move into the four-year realm of post-secondary. So this is wonderful. Thank you.
There are a number of awesome opportunities available for career pathways and opportunities, and that's where we really want students to find their passion and their interest and be successful because there's a lot of them out there and we want to expose students to as many possibilities as possible.
Thanks.
You?
Yeah, this is really exciting and, you know, it's, we're in the middle of a pandemic and I'm sitting here going, you're still working on all this? This is, so that's making me very happy. I have a question. On slide 15, you're talking about the PACE and it's, you keep referring to it as an individualized education plan for their career. And it starts in the end of middle school, goes through high school. And, you know, I think that's an awesome concept, but I, I guess I'm worried. You're going from one year to the next, you're going from a middle school to a high school. Do we, I know you're at the early stages of this, but for it to not, the work you do in eighth grade doesn't get dropped and you're, it disappears or what's the, the ideas about making sure this does continue on for their career?
You bring up some really good questions, and I think some of the things that you'll find at the eighth grade level, there's already some work that our middle schools are doing related to this. In our ELA curriculum, we have a career unit, so there's already this kind of built into it for a student to kind of explore career opportunities. So you'll see a little bit of that. We'll talk about the grant to survey and where that fits and how that'll connect from the eighth grade to ninth grade year. But I know that we've talked to the high school principals a little bit about how does this connect to the four-year course sequence as students kind of build out that four, that tentative four-year plan of how they're going to pick classes. And at the eighth grade level, you're starting to make some of those decisions for that ninth grade year. So you'll see some of those connections there as well. And our counselors have a strong conversation between the two levels as well, and they'll be strong leaders in this work as well.
I'm just imagining it, there's got to be some sort of a platform that carries it through, you know?
And, and that's where we're going to-
Or gets in the backpack and gets dumped at the end of the year and you don't want that to happen.
And we have an awesome resource that we're going to continue to look at how this supports this work in school links. Our counselors at the high school level have some, done some initial work to expose all of our students to school links, which offers an opportunity to track some of this information, but also helps them with that post-secondary development. We're going to start to look at how does, how do we onboard eighth graders into that experience as well so that they can make the connections there and how is some of this information?
Thank you very much. Thank you. This is awesome work. Wish, wish my kids would have enjoyed this.
Thanks for your time. Next on the items for discussion is legislative advocacy update. I have nothing in particular except for the fact that we are still working with the city on our, on our generation tables. So that's, that's in the works. Anybody else?
City of Naperville?
Correct. We're focusing on that, that effort first.
So I do have an update because remember I was looking into us presenting at the conference?
Sure.
I told you guys last board meeting that I did have a conversation with Eris regarding our work on, in that area. IASB actually had a seminar last Thursday afternoon regarding TIPS and economic development and that type of thing that they put on with Eris's, was actually in that, on that IASB calls as well as Robin Schwartz and another law firm. So I kind of took what Eris and I talked about, my notes from that, and I will present it to you guys, all of it, and then we can make the decision if we want to go forward. And I'll even create some type of rough outline that we can present. I think the deadline, if I'm not mistaken, is March, it's the first week of March. So I'll get it to you. I'll get you everything no later than Monday. That's okay.
Great. Anyone else on that issue? Questions, comments? Board of Education update? I got nothing. Motion to adjourn?
Second.